Meeting of March 18th. Kaylee, can we have roll call, please?
Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Chair Bushnell.
Good morning again.
Supervisor Madron.
President.
Yes.
Supervisor Rex. He is here. And Mike is not here yet. Supervisor Wilson.
Okay, can we salute our flag, please?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
CAO Hayes, can we have modifications to the agenda, please?
Sure. Good morning, Chair Bushnell. Items D4 and D6 are being pulled this morning for discussion.
Okay, thank you. We'll go right into our consent calendar. And the first, first of all, any supervisors have anything they want to say? Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. I had to miss a meeting, and so I want to appreciate my board for their support during the time that I had to be away. I was away on military duty in the Coast Guard for three weeks, working on hazmat response to the fires in LA, and cleaning up that alongside the EPA. So it was a really meaningful experience and also one that I didn't have a lot of choice in, but I really was glad to be there and help our neighbors to the south. And I want to thank our board, especially those who went to some other meetings for me as my alternate. So thank you very much for that support and for the staff's support.
Okay, thank you. We're going to read the proclamation for National Surveyors Week, and I believe there is someone here to receive that or not, and I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas land surveying has long been a rich part of our history and an important piece in the development of Humboldt County and the United States. And whereas some of the most famous land surveyors, including George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Daniel Boone, Abraham Lincoln, and Benjamin Banker, a free ex-slave who became part of the crew that surveyed the original borders of Washington, DC. And whereas land surveyors use specialized equipment to measure and mark property boundaries, calculating the dimensions of, excuse me. I'm trying to think of the word. Elevations, shapes, and contours of sites for public, government, and private development. And whereas land surveyors must conduct surveys and perform mathematical calculations with a high level of accuracy, a land surveyor's role involves examining historical property records and maps to determine the legal boundaries of a specific piece of land. And whereas the Humboldt County chapter of the California Land Surveyors Association has been instrumental in identifying and preserving historical land boundaries throughout monument preservation, surveys, and obtaining private collections of historic maps and survey records. And whereas the Humboldt County Surveyors Office strives to provide superior customer service to county departments and land development community and the general public, now therefore let it be resolved, the Board of Supervisors proclaim the week of March 16 through March 22 as National Surveyors Week in the county of Humboldt. So most people know that my husband's a land surveyor, and his dad was a land surveyor. And I learned a lot becoming a surveyor's wife, how to hold the thingy, as I call it, but, which my husband says is not right. But it is really an art, and it is a lot of work, and it is very interesting going out into the lands and going to a tree that has a blaze on it, or going to a tree that's been there 100 years and finding corners. So thank you to all the surveyors in the county and in the state. There aren't many of them. And congratulations to for Surveyors Week. So the next one we will go on to is Supervisor Wilson is going to read this for me, and he is here now. And so it's a proclamation of Sunshine Week.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. Apologize, one of those days happens every once in a while. And it's not because it's the day after St. Patrick's Day. I wish it was, but it's not. All right. This is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors in recognition of Sunshine Week. Whereas Sunshine Week is a national initiative to start dialogue on the importance of government and the freedom of information. And whereas Sunshine Week is a nonpartisan initiative whose supporters are conservative, liberal, and from every group in between, I guess that assumes a linear political line, but, you know, it's more than that. Sunshine Week participants include print, broadcast, online news, media, civic groups, libraries, nonprofits, schools, and others interested in the public's right to know. And whereas James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that the constant, excuse me, the consent of the governed requires that the people are able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives. And whereas an open government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust in their government and the government's ability to serve people effectively, the free flow of information keeps government processes honest and robust. Sunshine Week empowers people to play an active role in their government at all levels and strengthens the access of information that makes their lives better and their communication stronger. And whereas protecting every person's right to the access of public records and government meetings is high priority, and whereas the League of Women Voters of Humboldt County supports the goals of Sunshine Week, the League provides our residents with nonpartisan education through public forums, publications, and presentations, assists with voter registration, and encourages participation in government. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors names March 16 through the 22, 2025 Sunshine Week, and encourages all residents to educate themselves about government processes that affect their lives. Signed by Michelle Bushnell.
Thank you. I want to recognize that also through our consent calendar that Seroptimus of the Il River gave several, oh, you guys are here, come forward.
Oh, but not Seroptimus, we're League of Women Voters.
You're what?
The League of Women Voters.
League of Women Voters.
Okay, go ahead. You can want to say something on that.
Yeah, I'm Bonnie Oliver, and this is Ann Hartline. We're on the board of the League of Women Voters, and I wanted to thank you, Chair Bushnell and the board, for this recognition of Sunshine Week and the continuing need to maintain open government access to information. And thank you for your cooperation with Access Humboldt and our local newspapers and online news services in their efforts to shine the light on our local government and for your efforts to make your meetings open and accessible to Humboldt County citizens. So thank you for that proclamation and.
And. Thank you. They're going to bring it up to you.
Thank you for letting us just jump up.
Oh, no, of course.
All right. Oh, that would be great. While we're getting set up.
Oh.
Photo first, there you go. Get in here, put your hands on there. Wait.
Yes, the event, one of our local papers. I'll read what they say about it. Access Humboldt Sunshine Week Discussion Award Presentation and Reception takes place Thursday, March 20, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the Eureka Theater. Illuminate 2025 is free for the whole community to attend. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. So moving on, certificates of recognition for the Seroptimus International Il River Valley Award winners. I presented those awards last week. It was a great event. I'm not going to read them all today, but they are on the agenda if you would like to read them. And congratulations to all those winners. And then we're going to go to Humboldt County Animal Shelter of the Month. Do you want to just say something?
I think there's an image to pull up, Kaylee. I'm not, is there a picture of the animal? Not to put you on the spot. Okay, I'll just speak to it. So we continue to do a featured Shelter Animal of the Month, but because it's a lot of work to bring the animal from the shelter to the courthouse, although Supervisor Bone, I think, really enjoyed meeting the dog that came in when we kicked this off, who sat in his lap for quite a while. She was a gem. We, I'm continuing to just do this on social media, so I wanted to maybe, moving forward, have a picture of the animal of the month and talk about, you know, our shelter, just to draw attention to the wonderful adoptable pets at our shelter. I did learn, so I went a couple months ago and met a bunch of adoptable animals, and all of the cats that I met, including all of the cats that had a lot of special medical conditions, have all been adopted. So that was great to hear. There's actually, the cats are just flying off the shelves at the shelter right now. But it's about to be, it's about to be kitten season, so they said, don't hold your breath. There's going to be more kittens and cats to come, for sure. It's just a unique moment where there's not as many cats, but there's plenty of dogs, plenty of pets to adopt, so I encourage folks to go check it out.
And obviously flying cats.
And flying cats, yep. Pretty exciting stuff up there. So on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they are open later till 7:00. So for folks who, you know, work perhaps a nine-to-five type job, you can go after work on those days. And I encourage folks to check on Pet Finder or 24 Pet Connect. 24 Pet Connect and entering the zip code for the animal shelter is one of the best ways to search the pets.
Thank you. Any members of our board have anything else to say about consent before we go to public comment?
Supervisor Arroyo, there is a flyer attached to this item in Legisdar, so if the public wants to see it.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other members of the board have any comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment on the Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I'll unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Kim Swawsky. I think I should comment on Sunshine Week first. We've got seven, seven days down here in Teno, Mexico. I think you guys have maybe one and a half. Anyway, it was an interesting presentation, and I strongly support a lot of what it stands for is transparency and freedom of information and things like that, which took a lot of us avail ourselves of. And so I thank you for bringing that forward. I also wanted to thank you for item eight. I always appreciate the features of an animal, animals or whatever, and I guess I didn't know which one it is, a dog. I did notice there's actually a rabbit that they have on their website for adoption. Maybe a snowball or something like that. So anyway, I did wish to comment on those particular topics, and I will leave it at that. Thank you, ma'am, for your speak from Mexico, sunny Teno, Mexico. Bye.
That is all Chair Bushnell.
Thank you. Any comment in the room on the consent calendar? Come to the podium, please. Good morning, sir.
Hi, good morning. My name is David Kendall. I'm a land surveyor. I was, sorry I missed the.
Presentation?
Presentation, yeah.
Okay.
But I just wanted to say on behalf of the.
Please.
California Land Surveyors Association, the Humboldt chapter, thank you for the honor, and it's very nice to be recognized. We consider it an honor to participate in this profession, and especially, you know, this week, every year, we try to get some time with our county representatives. So thank you for the.
You're welcome. I'm sorry you missed the presentation, but my husband's a land surveyor, so it's kind of near to my heart. And I was explaining to the audience that I hold the thingy for him, which is the reflector or the thumb, the bob thing for him. That's my job, and so it's a unique skill, and thank you for doing it. It really monuments our lands for years and years and years, and is definitely an acquired skill.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to actually present this, go ahead.
Your husband's David Bushnell?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I've worked with him.
I'm going to present this to you and get a picture, so hold on.
Oh, great, yeah.
Can you move the rod to the right slightly?
Very good.
Okay, one, two, three, and then take a smile. Please do. Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, Katie, can you get his phone number so that, did she leave? Yeah, so that you can send it to him. Any other public comment in the room? No? Okay, closing public comment. I'm going to look for a motion minus the two items pulled, please.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar minus the items pulled.
Thank you. Kaylee?
Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Madron.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So before we go on to our items pulled, my vice chair is going to say a few words.
Thank you. So we're trying to keep our decorum here in the chambers as productive as possible and as open as possible. And so one of those things that we're trying to bring, that tradition of not clapping or booing out loud when we have items that are people speaking here at the dais. The reason for that is so that everyone feels comfortable with what they have to say. They don't feel like, you know, that there's pressure in any way from the audience or from us. So we, there is a tradition of, you know, waving your hands if you approve of things and those sorts of movements. But then also, we do have a few exceptions. We do have them for retirements and puppies, so, so far. Those are, those are, those are our exceptions. That may expand in the future, I suppose, but that's where we stand right now. So I just want to, like, make sure that everyone stays calm, hears what everyone has to say, don't interrupt each other, and move on with the meeting.
Thank you. So we're going to go to our first item pulled from consent. It's a proclamation, oops, I went by it. A tsunami preparedness week proclamation that Supervisor Bone is bringing, and I believe Mr. Derby is in the room, if you want to come forward, and whoever else is here for this proclamation.
Come on, Kathy, you can come up there, too. I need to move you around so it's, anyway.
Should we stagger it?
That's what I was thinking.
By height?
You're fine, Kathy. Whereas California's long coastline is proximity to earthquake faults and its location on the Pacific Ring of Fire make up vulnerable to tsunamis. And whereas 46 tsunamis have been recorded on California's North Coast, including five that caused damage. Whereas 11 residents of Del Norte County, California, were killed by the tsunami generated by the 1964 Alaska earthquake, and one resident of Del Norte County was killed by the tsunami generated by the 2011 Japan earthquake. And whereas a tsunami warning was issued for Humboldt County coastline after the Japan earthquake in 2011, and a tsunami advisory was issued in 2022 after the explosive volcanic eruption in Tonga. Whereas a tsunami warning was issued for Humboldt County five minutes after the December 5, 2024 magnitude 7.0 earthquake, and disseminated throughout the emergency alert system and wireless emergency alert system, as well as through local alert warning systems, causing a mixed public response and highlighting the need for increased earthquake and tsunami education in the community. Tsunami news can be caused by underwater landslides, as well as offshore earthquakes can occur at any time with little warning. Whereas education awareness, communications are fundamental to saving lives in tsunami event. Whereas the Living on Shaky Ground publication contains the most updated, vetted, and locally relevant earthquake and tsunami preparedness information for the North Coast. Whereas the State of California has dedicated March 22 through the 30 tsunami preparedness week. And whereas the County of Humboldt encourages all residents, living, working, or recreating within a tsunami hazard zone, to participate in countywide evacuation drills at 11:00 AM on Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Now therefore be resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim their support of tsunami education and evacuation drills, and encourage agencies, businesses, other organizations to test their ability to receive and respond to tsunami coming from nearby or far away. Signed, Michelle Bushnell, Chair.
It's not a puppy.
But it could save the puppy.
Retirement puppy dance tsunami. People do this announcement every week with the additions. Okay, thanks.
Do I get to say a few words? Well, thank you, Chair, members of the board. As mentioned in the proclamation, on March 26, we're going to be conducting a whole community tsunami and earthquake preparedness drill. The earthquake and tsunami warning that occurred on December 5, we largely see as a big wake-up call for the community. We've done these proclamations just about every year, as long as I've been here. And tsunamis are one of those really low frequency but high-impact events that can impact our community, and it's really incumbent on all of us to push the education and preparedness out to the community. So on the 26th at 11:00 AM, we're kind of requesting that residents, business owners, and facilities within the tsunami hazard zone practice their tsunami plan by walking out of the tsunami hazard zones into the higher elevation zones. There's a map, an interactive map, on the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group website, as well as the California Geological Survey that shows where those zones are. You can input your address and find out. And for residents outside of the tsunami zone, we're requesting that they get familiar with where those zones are, because they frequently work or recreate in those areas or otherwise will be impacted by travel or earthquake impacts. We had planned to do a countywide test notification that day. We're going to be scaling that back largely to the coastal zones and a little bit further inland, rather than doing a countywide, just because last week there was a whole county notification that went out on Friday. I'm going to stop there and let these two speak if they want, but thank you for this proclamation and for highlighting the importance of this.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, board. The map that Ryan was just talking about, I gave to Supervisor Bone, and it looks a lot like this. This is the countywide one. There are also several series of maps that zoom into certain communities. And one of my goals with these exercises coming up and activities in the next week is to, for everyone to know their zone. So I've given you this map here, and I have another stack for the audience or anyone who wants, to do a little exercise. And with a pen, mark down where you sleep, where you work, and the most common route you take in doing that. And also include where your kids may be going to school, where you recreate, and see where you are in the in and the out. Imagine right now if there was an earthquake, and we have all been through those earthquakes where it is, ooh, that creaking of the building, was that or wasn't that? Or it's still going. It's still going. Okay, now we've survived the earthquake, what do we do? Well, if we have done this exercise, we know whether we're in or out of a tsunami hazard area. And I found after November, after December 5 event, while I knew where I sleep, and most of you know, I sleep in a tsunami hazard zone. My office is outside of a tsunami hazard zone. So I took a red pen, and I marked where I sleep, and I drew the map to where I work. And it was not until I got to north of Smoa Boulevard that I was outside of a tsunami hazard zone. So on December 5, I was driving, and it was like, and my phone started going up, and there's an earthquake. And I was like, okay, driving, earthquake. I know, I'm supposed to be all over. I've been told this. So that's what I did. But then I still didn't have in my mind, was I in, was I out, was I on the border? And I made lots of wrong decisions that day, mostly getting into the cluster that became Broadway. But by doing this exercise, I now have a better direction as to where I'm going to do, what my actions are going to be if I'm in a tsunami hazard zone and the ground starts to shake. And I ask all of you to do the same thing so that you know when you're here at the chambers, or when you're at your office, or where you're at home, or where you recreate, whether you're in or out. Thank you.
Hello, my, thank you for the proclamation, reading it today. So my name's Ryan Elward. I'm the Warning Coordination Meteorologist at the National Weather Service here on Woodley Island. So I just wanted to cover a couple things related to what happened December 5, and also what's going on for a future event. So December 5, we had a local earthquake, and there are different sort of tsunami events. This was a local one where we felt the local earthquake. And in that scenario, I just want to emphasize for everyone, that's the, the earthquake needs to be your warning. We got lucky in this case that the earthquake was far enough off the coast. We didn't have significant damage, but in a future event, someday we could have significant damage from that earthquake, and you may not receive the warning you received on your phone. So I just really want to emphasize to everyone to use the earthquake as your warning for a local event and start evacuating when the shaking, when the strong shaking stops. A tsunami could arrive in as little as 10 minutes in those scenarios. So really, it's going to be the earthquake that's your warning. I'm going to tell you, at the Weather Service, we're going to press the button, and we're going to try to turn the warning on, but we're just thinking that the infrastructure may be damaged to the point that it may not go out, so we can't wait for that. For a distant source event, it's a totally different thing. So if something coming from Alaska or Japan, you know, there's many hours till the wave gets here. We don't have that local tsunami, sorry, that local earthquake. So when the tsunami gets here, we have hours, and we can actually just drive out of the zone. Local one, we've really got to walk. We saw the traffic that built up after the, after this earthquake. You don't want to be stuck in traffic. So those are, those are the two big things that I just want to emphasize today. And one other thing about March 26 this year, normally we do a live code test in which we activate the emergency alert system, put the tsunami crawler on TV, it says tsunami warning, and it goes over the radio. We're not going to do that this year because we literally just did it on December 5. So we don't want to activate that whole system. So it's just going to be the reverse calling message that's going to go out to the county, and we hope that everyone will just participate and practice that evacuation out of the zone.
Thank you. So please stay up here, because I'm going to ask Supervisor Bone, but then we're going to let the board ask questions.
Okay.
And that's probably a good idea. If you don't get a phone call on the 26, you are not signed up for the reverse phone, and that's probably what you need to follow up on, and that's on the county, that's on the county website. The other thing is, is you just stated you're going to, don't drive, don't walk. Where the hell do you guys go from your office? Because I'm pretty sure you're swimming.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So yeah, Woodley Island is actually the very center of the island, and where we're at is outside the tsunami zone.
No.
Yeah, it's outside the tsunami zone. I know.
No.
Yeah, so you look on the map and you'll see a little green circle.
But all the way up to Fourth Street is the tsunami zone. It kind of goes around you.
They'll be stuck there for a few days.
We will be stuck, yes. So, so yeah, and that's the same thing as it goes.
Wasn't that convenient?
Yeah, well, I was going to add, that's the same thing that goes for Fairhaven, Samoa, Manila, there are high dunes that people can go out to. And that's the right response for a local event. We have a big local earthquake. It's to evacuate onto those dunes, because by the time you drive out, well, one, you could get stuck in traffic, but two, if we have that really big one, and what I'm talking about, 9.0, that's what these maps are designed for. They're designed for the worst-case scenario, 9.0, Cascadia ruptures. The bridges may not be there and structurally sound, you know, and it's actually the approaches to the bridges. You may not be able to even get on them. So we really encourage people to evacuate to high grounds. Sorry?
The gates are going in at the bridges as we speak right now. They're wiring them right now.
I don't know about the gates, but.
There's going to be gates on the entrance to both spans of the bridge that drop down in case of an earthquake, so then they can go check the structure, so you can't get on.
Okay, well, then that's even more reason to not have that in your plan. So, yeah. Yeah, so evacuating to the high grounds.
You guys should know that.
Definitely the best bet. And then with the island, we're actually at 19 feet elevation. It doesn't feel it, but we're pretty high.
Well, 2011, they evacuated, they evacuated the whole peninsula.
Yeah, so for distant source, it's a very different response, because you have the time.
Yeah.
It's the local event that's the problem, where you only have up to 10 minutes until the wave could arrive. So that's where you evacuate to the dunes. Distance source, pack up everything. Distance source, pack up everything, grab the pets, you know, all that stuff, you know, you have lots of time to just grab everything and put everything in your car and go. You know, other thing, you've got to put the dog on the leash and just run up to the dune, you know, whatever it's going to be.
Thank you so much. So we're going to, are there any other comments from the board? Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I appreciate that you highlighted that Woodley Island is actually one of those locations that is safe. There's been, I've had the great pleasure of seeing presentations by you and by your colleague Troy quite a few times, especially recently, and it was really helpful to think about that our, our conditions, our bathymetry are under, you know, water conditions, and a number of other factors make it. So we're not expecting a, like a Japanese painting of a tsunami, that type of look. We're expecting a large amount of water, almost like a rising river. And I try to help people visualize that, and talk with residents about it, because if you're envisioning an enormous wave, then the idea that you could go to a high dune and be safe just doesn't equate for people. Or the idea that you could remain in place, and that is the safest option, doesn't equate for folks. But if they're envisioning the water level just going up and up and up to a certain point, and trusting that there is really good data out there about where is safe to go, then we will not see people driving. And so I think it's kind of incumbent on all of us to let people know that, that those high places that they can get to on foot are really the best options, and that getting stuck in your car in floodwaters is the, is the biggest killer for people, unfortunately. So I think it's important to be honest about that in forthcoming, and tell people not to get stuck in their car in floodwater. That's how the greatest number of people, I understand, in flooding conditions perish, so.
Thank you. So I, Ryan, I wanted to talk to you about the, or have you explain a little bit, or one of you guys. On December 5th, it doesn't matter which one, you know, there was a lot of confusion around whether there was a tsunami, whether there wasn't one. We got calls, I think this whole board probably did, I got calls from Crescent City, from their Board of Supervisors, and I talked to you several times that day. I know that Broadway got jammed, packed, and nobody was able to move, as Supervisor Arroyo is saying, and that is in the tsunami zone. So can you just talk a little bit about, you know, clear, what clearly is going to come when there is a tsunami with an earthquake that happens here, not from one that is across the ocean?
Sure. So there's a few different systems that automatically trigger. There's the California Early Earthquake System that automatically sends out either a pre or during earthquake notification when there's a 5.0 magnitude or higher. And then the federal tsunami warning that was received is automatically triggered when there's an earthquake at 7.1 or higher. So on December 5th, the initial reading of that earthquake came in at a 7.3, triggering that automatic wireless emergency alert, and then it was later downgraded to a 7.1. So with large earthquakes, you can expect, assuming that infrastructure is intact, that early earthquake notification, and then subsequent wireless emergency alert for the tsunami warning or tsunami advisory from the federal government. And then our process at the county is to, once we've verified information, then send out a local Humboldt alert to registered contacts within our system. Just to speak a little bit to the tsunami response, I was driving back from Sacramento that day, but we have completed an after-action report that, if any of you are interested in taking a look at lessons learned from that incident, or ways that the whole community and our government can do better at responding, I can make that available to you. I hope that answered your question.
It did, thank you. And then if you wanted, if you're not signed up for Humboldt Alert, how would you do that?
So you can go to humboldtgov.org/alerts and sign up yourself, or you can call the Office of Emergency Services at 707-268-2500, and one of our staff will help register you.
Thank you. And if you, I would love to read that report, if you could forward that to our board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So at this time, if there's no other questions, Supervisor Wilson?
There's not so much questions in the observation from that time. And there were a mix of responses, for sure, but one thing I did really appreciate about this is that we do go through these tsunami warning exercises, and this was, in essence, a tsunami warning exercise that we actually all got. You know, everyone received it, and it was a great experiment. There were some successes, and there were some just complete failures, you know, on our part, as a community in various ways. And one of the things that I think you're, we have to remember is if we're letting people know that walking to where they need to go is the best bet under these situations, what we did see was not just people driving to maybe escape what they imagined to be a tsunami area. Like, I talked to many people who were, who drove somewhere when they weren't even in the tsunami area to begin with, because as Supervisor Arroyo mentioned, they just imagined giant waves, you know, 30 feet tall coming, or maybe even higher. But the other part was, we had schoolkids moving through our, moving through our communities, and a bunch of panicked drivers. So we really put people more at risk under that scenario than they needed to be. And so I'm hoping that we trust a bit more, or, you know, that, and this is my, being a parent with a kid in school, you know, we have responsibility to, to work with our local school districts to make sure and check in, like, what are, what are those plans, and then trust that the professionals, that they're going to do their job. Because certainly, there was a lot of panicked parents driving out onto the peninsula and back, and, you know, this was not, that was not an optimal situation, and so we all have to do better in that, in that regard. So I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I, and I'm just glad that we were able to have an exercise where we could beta-test really how we're going to react and see where our weaknesses are. Thanks.
And if I may, that's a really good point you bring up, because the schools and the districts did a really good job sending out early notifications to parents. And where we saw the challenge, at least from our perspective and from the perspective of the districts, is, you know, speaking as a parent too, if my kid is at a school in a tsunami hazard zone, my intuition is to go and pick them up. But we have to be able to trust the school to have the safety of our children in mind, and know that they have a plan. And for those very few schools that are actually in a tsunami hazard zone, they have plans, they test them just as frequently as they do fire drills, and we need, we need to know that our kids are safe when they go to school, and not go pick them up when we receive these notices.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to go to public comment on the Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718. I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Ken Swawski, my chair I'm sitting on is probably 15 foot above sea level elevation here, where I'm at. To serious concern, I like the science, and I don't know how these tsunami zones were established. Maybe somebody could inform us somehow. They really don't make sense to me. It seems like there would be geological evidence that over history of millions of years, where those tsunami zones should be. I question. I did want to make mention, so I was concerned about tsunamis. So I went out to a project out on the peninsula, one of the largest development projects out there, Danco Project, and they had a "safe zone," quote unquote. It was a little above their facility there, up on one of these sand dunes you're talking about. But that, to get to that spot, you couldn't do it. I mean, I could not walk up the bank. It was covered in brush. There was no ability to get a handicap person up there, unless you had people willing to carry them up in a wheelchair or something. So these quote-unquote "safe zones," unless they're being inspected, maybe it's been changed since a few years ago, then unless those are being inspected, they aren't safe, because people can't get to them. That's a concern. Especially, in my opinion, certain residential developments should not be in those zones, should not have been built in those zones. And I question our planning as far as the future goes. I have a question. What, is it possible for us to have a 30-foot wall of water? Are you 100% sure that hadn't happened, couldn't happen again? I like the science, but maybe some of those questions could be answered. Maybe the zones will have to be altered to give everybody the best chance of surviving what is eventually going to happen, the inevitable. So thank you for bringing this very, very concerning situation to us. Again, when you have a倾 tide and a weather event going on, should you have a tsunami on top of that, of course, that probably has a major effect as far as that goes. So best of luck where you're at, and I'm hoping we don't have one down here.
Caller 0151. I'm going to unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. So it's great to hear all about the planning. I really like the idea of a safe zone. When I was in Garberville, when we had our last earthquake that shook quite a bit, I was in Votality, just, actually just leaving and getting in the car, and there were a lot of younger folks that haven't been in an earthquake, fortunately for them, and they didn't know what to do. They had no idea what to do, they were just looking around to find somebody that knew something about the earthquakes that could help. So I think it's really important that we establish safe zones in all of our areas. So I don't know anything about a safe zone in Garberville. I don't know anything about a safe zone in Redway. I don't know anything about a safe zone in Miranda or Phillipsville. So there should be one in every place, and it's not that big of a deal, there's land around, there are people around that can participate. So I think that we really need to pay attention to what is a safe zone, and are we safe or are we not? If we're not, which I don't think we are, then we can step it up. But it involves the community, it involves property owners, it involves collaboration, which we don't always have. The other thing is, ever since the pot industry was paying to be permitted, it's been, instead of families and friends and neighbors liking each other and helping each other, it's about attacking each other so somebody can make more money on their grow, or whatever stupid thing it is. So I think that we really need to change the idea of, if there's a problem, what are we going to do about it? Having a neighbor attack another neighbor because somebody wants the property like they did the Christian Science Church in Garberville, or they want to have somebody's property that has a well on it. It's ridiculous. So having people...
Dottie, excuse me, Dottie, we're on tsunamis, so that's probably public comment on non-agenda items. Please finish your comment on the tsunami topic.
All right, okay. Let's figure out how to have that safe zone, get some posters up, and thank you, you're right, I got off on a tangent. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. I also want to recognize that Garberville, Redway, Miranda is not in a tsunami zone, and so that's why there's no safe zone for tsunamis in that area. Shelter Cove, however, is in a tsunami zone. So just, if you look at the map, Dottie, you'll see that.
Thank you, caller, and Chair, that is all.
Any public comment in the room on tsunamis? Hi, welcome.
Hello, I'm Stephen, and I have a public comment about tsunamis. As the presenters just stated, how NOAA is very involved in tsunami monitoring, and will send warnings impossible. Well, if you're not aware, Elon Musk is cutting NOAA offices in Humboldt. Yes, so he was right about how the shaking is going to be your big warning, because there may not be any NOAA to tell us that there is a tsunami incoming. And if you are all concerned about that, I suggest you contact your representatives about that. Thank you, and goodbye.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. I did want OES or the weather to address, you know, we hear, we hear lots of things about the 30-foot wave coming in, and we just heard that from some commenters. So can you address that, please?
Yeah, so I was on the committee that helped develop the tsunami inundation zone map that's out there right now, so I happen to know a lot about this. So that zone map was developed through a whole bunch of different things that went in from this California Geological Survey. They did modeling of the worst-case scenarios, they basically took every scenario that could possibly happen in the Pacific and said, what's the worst? Let's put that as the, as the model. So we then went to that, added 30% error, so there's an added buffer, got to a line, and we said, okay, let's just follow the contour that's nearest to that spot, basically to the whole meter, went beyond the line, and then we went an extra meter higher. So when you're looking at that line, it's essentially got 30 to 40% of error on top to just cover for anything that might, might just have a wave go a little bit higher. So if you're in the green, you are way outside of any, any evidence that says that tsunami waves can get there. So what I really encourage people to do is go to the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group's website, click on the option that's on the right, it says tsunami hazard maps. Go to that location, there's a GIS map from the California Geological Survey where you can go down to the street level and go to where, like Kathy was saying, go through that exercise, homework, you know, whatever it is, and look at the zone, and just, and know those hazards and where you might go. As for that 30-foot wave, the one thing about tsunami waves, as they hit the coast, they lose energy, and so they're going to slowly decay as they move inland. So right at the coast, yes, the wave is going to be very large, right at the beach. As it moves inland and gets to Eureka, you'll notice that the zone is very, very small. Really, everyone can walk in 10 minutes out of the zone in Eureka. It's very possible, we've tested it. So that, that area is small because it's losing that energy, and that's why Woodley Island doesn't get fully inundated either. So yeah, look at those zones, that's how you're going to find out if you're in a safe zone, or you need to evacuate for that, for a tsunami.
Thank you so much. Could I get a motion from my board?
Motion to receive and file this very important report.
One second. Thank you. Kaylee?
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you to you both, all three. Thanks. You can clap on this one. Thank you. So we're going to go to the next item that was pulled, retirement resolution for Melissa Chilton. And if people that want to speak on this can come up, and Melissa, would you like to come up, please? And I'm going to have Supervisor Arroyo read this. Oftentimes, the chair sponsors things, but I like to share it with my board, so Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. Great, and I know you have some friends here to speak, so anyone who wants to speak is welcome to get ready as well. Hi, Melissa.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Well, I'm going to read out this lovely, lovely resolution for you. Whereas Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services Budget Specialist Melissa Chilton is retiring after nearly 23 years with the department, and whereas Melissa was hired in 2002 as a senior fiscal analyst, spending a year working in an out-of-class assignment as a senior accountant auditor, before being promoted to budget specialist in 2005, a position she has held for almost 20 years. And whereas Melissa is well-regarded and respected by her peers across the state, and has worked on a number of state committees, including as co-chair and chair of the County Behavioral Health Directors Association of California's Financial Analysis and Review Subcommittee Work Group, catchy name.
There's an acronym for that.
While it was active, and led the California Behavioral Health Administrators Association. And whereas Melissa's significant expertise in complicated Department of Healthcare Services fiscal requirements and regulations made it possible for her to challenge this governing body with confidence and authority when necessary, due to her breadth and depth of knowledge and understanding. And whereas Melissa is credited as the chief financial architect of the first regional drug-medical organized delivery system in the state, opening access to substance use disorder treatment for thousands of people across Northern California. And whereas her expertise and statewide leadership has helped thousands of residents access mental health and substance use disorder treatment and recovery services, and has supported the health and well-being of children, youth, and families throughout Humboldt County. And whereas Melissa's contribution to the field of behavioral health will be felt by the Humboldt County community and beyond for many years to come. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes, honors, and expresses our gratitude for Melissa Chilton's years of dedication to the county and community, and wishes her all the best as she gets on her horse and rides off into the sunset.
So we're going to get a, we're going to get a picture. We'll get a picture with your resolution, and then we'll have you and your friends say a few words. Get a picture first.
Okay, thank you.
So wow, that emptied our chambers out. Melissa, we'd love for you to speak and say your wishes.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Arroyo for that beautiful read. And I've been in negotiations with my family about getting a dog, but now I'm thinking it's going to be a dog and pony, right? So I can get on my horse and ride. So this being the day after St. Patrick's Day, I had all kinds of clever things to say about this kind and thoughtful resolution. And sobering up, I'd prefer to thank Chair Bushnell, your esteemed board, and everyone I've had the pleasure to work with at the County of Humboldt. In particular, the compassionate work of the Department of Health and Human Services and Behavioral Health awes and inspires. I've been honored and humbled to been fiscal adjacent to their work. Thank you to everyone I've worked with and for. All of your efforts make Humboldt the place I'm proud to serve and call home. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Well, you can stay here. I'm going to brag on you. Good morning, Board, Chair Bushnell, and distinguished members of the Board. I just want to lift up my appreciation for Melissa and all the years of service that she has given to our community, and the expertise and knowledge that she has and has shared throughout the county. She's obviously recognized as a leader among the counties and her peers at the state level. And through her work, the County of Humboldt has been recognized as a leader in financial services. So I appreciate everything you've done for us, Melissa, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. All of the things that was said in the resolution are all true. In addition to that, though, I just wanted to add that in Melissa's off time, she is a beekeeper in Ferndale. And she, I can't see this, Barn Cat Ranch is her honey. It's some of the best local honey that you could ever have, and she just processed a new batch for this year. So just, I wish her so much, so much great time now that she has more time to spend with her bees and dogs and ponies now too, I guess. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So at this time, we will go to public comment on the Zoom.
There is none, Chair.
Okay, anybody in the room wish to say anything for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and come back to our board. Supervisor Wilson?
On the shoulders of giants, that's what I say. Really, we talk a lot about, we have retirements of those who are sort of the menders of our social fabric, but then all those folks have to stand on the infrastructure and the rock that holds that, you know, that holds everybody up to do the work that they do. And so thank you so much for that. It often goes so unappreciated, and I will say that, you know, even within our national dialogue right now, there's just, there's just a lack of recognition of the work that's done at this level, and the integrity of that work, the vision of that work, the the true authentic intention to deliver the services that we desperately need. So I just want to be thankful to you and to everyone who does that level. I mean, we're thankful for everyone in our civil servants, for sure. But, you know, it seems the deeper you get down, the, almost the less recognition you get a little bit in terms of just the dialogue today. And so I just want to just highlight what you're doing and bring that up. So thank you so much for that. I know you're going to, folks like yourself who do this, I know you're going to retire, but we're going to feel you in this, in this community for a long time. Thank you so much.
So I don't do this often, but because it's a retirement, and I want to recognize there is a public comment, and we'll see if it's related to your retirement resolution.
Caller 0151, I'm going to unmute you and you'll have three minutes. Caller 0151?
Okay, so I will bring it back to the board.
We heard you for a moment.
I've hit star nine, one, two, three, four times, and star six three times. So it's not exactly working perfectly today, but that's okay. I just want to say that for every dollar that is spent with Health and Human Services and addressing the needs of the people in our community is worth hundreds of dollars for not only the health of these people, but in addition, the health of our community, the health of how we see each other, what compassion we have, and what we do to see one another as a human being. So I appreciate very much, and a lot of these people that have been doing this work for 20 years, for even over 10 years, are going to be hugely missed. And I hope that as much information that can be passed on will be passed on because it's so, so important to the very core of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to my board for a motion. I do want to say congratulations on your retirement and good luck with your bees and your dog and your horse. And the work of DHHS is, it's probably one of the most difficult in the county. You all work with a lot of people that are unhappy, sad, in desperate needs, and that is a difficult chore to do every single day, and to be upbeat and try to help them, try to encourage them. I want to recognize that and recognize the difference that you make to our most vulnerable people in Humboldt County. So again, congratulations on your retirement. And Supervisor Wilson is correct, your efforts will be felt for many years to come, and that is something to really be proud of when you are ready to step off into retirement. So if I could get a motion, please?
Move to receive and file this resolution.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Lots of volunteer opportunities in Ferndale, yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to go on to public comment on, there you go. We are going to go on to public comment on non-agenda items. So if you have a public comment on non-agenda items, please line up, and we're going to start on the Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I'm going to unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Kent Swawski, I was in communication with Erin Beth McClure. And as far as, as long as you know, she spends a lot of time down in Ferndale, and a lot of the time she spends down there at your fairgrounds. And there's major concerns, her, and it's justified, I believe, as far as how that's being managed down there. I know we basically, we lent that fairground a million dollars or something to do some renovation. Question is, did we get that paid back? It kind of like, sounds like maybe even the horse racing in jeopardy that that was done for. Things that have brought to my attention is, the staff down there is not being realistic in the rates they're charging people. Things that were like $150, they're now trying to charge them $750. A group used to rent the facility there, a portion of it, for $2,500. It was raised to $10,000. They offered to pay $5,000 instead, which is double what they were. They were turned down. Another fee, I think for trailer storage, I believe was the category, where a lot of people would keep an extra trailer there. Maybe they lived in the hills and would want to come down and use that, or during times of rain or something. Went from $400 to $1,250. Now, I know they need to make more money, but they need to be realistic about what they're charging. So they've gone from making the $400 to making nothing. And maybe they could have gone to $600 rather than three times, more than three times what they were at. Strongly suggest that you folks check into this. It is, I believe, a part of your function to work with that down there. And if this, in my opinion, mismanagement and unrealistic rate increases happen, instead of getting some money, you're going to be getting none. You know, that's a major concern. It's a great facility, and people like Erin enjoyed using it, but now it's kind of out of the price range for most people to do. She gets lessons down there and things. Your attention might be appropriate on that topic. Great, I'm going to speak on this. Or lastly here, I think I have a comment from Ryan Burns, he objects to something I said. I'll deal with that in the future. Thank you for my opinion.
Thank you. Caller 0159, I'm going to unmute you and you will have three minutes.
I think it's delayed for her.
Good morning to all public servants. My name is James-Jay Colen Parker, comma beneficiary, comma executive of the trust. And this is the please take notice. Notice to principal is notice to agent, and notice to agent is notice to principal. In the process of exposing the fraud, waste, and abuse of being attacked by the county at every level, not because I've hurt anybody, not because I've done any harm or damage to anybody's property, it's because I'm asking the who, the what, the where, the when, and the why questions. And right now, I'm calling out specifically Michelle Bushnell, sitting up in her big chair there, grandstanding. I've made numerous phone calls to your office to set up an appointment, you refused. You unilaterally hang up on me on the phone calls with no probable cause, not using abusive language on me, just trying to get some answers to some questions that you refuse to answer, which is a disgrace. And, you know, if I was in your position and I answered the phone for one of the people out there that you're supposed to be serving, but it's obvious that you're not, you're serving the oligarchs through your municipal corporation, you know, it would be pleasant to hear, "Yeah, good morning, this is Michelle Bushnell, Second District Supervisor, may I help you?" Instead of sheepishly answering the phone like, "Who is this?" You know, it's just ridiculous. Also, I want to call out Rex Bond, which engages in the same type of behavior when you call him. As a matter of fact, I got an email from him. I've sent out a plethora of emails over the years. None of them get answered. Rex Bond did answer one of them, sent me an email, and it said, I'm paraphrasing it, it was quite a few years ago, "Stop sending me emails, I don't answer them anyway." And then I want to also call out Tracy D'Amico, the clerk of the board that took over for Kathy Hayes, the previous clerk of the board, that would never respond and return your phone calls. She has a tendency to do the same thing as well. I mean, she's been very pleasant lately, which is very much appreciated. Also, I want to move down to the oath of offices. I received a number of oath of offices on eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheets of paper with no court seal on it. The court seal is very important. Legislative body of California has a requisite court seal with all the specifications. And if the documents don't have that requisite seal with all the specifications, meaning all the parameters, it's a worthless document. So, you know, I'd appreciate if you'd investigate that and get into using the proper court seal with all the proper...
Thank you, you ran out of time unfortunately. I'm going to have to move to next caller. Caller 0151, I'm going to unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Hello, this is Dottie Russell, but I'm going to put on another community member, and then after I'd like to have my three minutes. So this is the first time?
Yeah. A little nerve-wracking. But anyways, my name is Andrew. I've lived in Humboldt for the past 15 years and five of those working at the railway community service district. And while I do have a kid that goes to preschool, the charter school down there in Weah. And I feel like what the community needs is like a recreation center, like something kids can do after school. I think that is lacking in this community. And I hope that something we all can work together and make happen, because it's important for children to have something to do. And as a single parent, that's something I struggle with, in a way, trying to figure out what my kids should do. I'm sure there are a few things they can do, but a community recreation center would be a great idea. And hopefully, we all can work together and make that happen. Thank you.
All right, yeah, great, perfect. So could my three minutes start? This is Dottie Russell.
Dottie, your three minutes are going, go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks. I wanted to talk about this survey that was done for the economy in Humboldt County. So I happened to see it on Red-Headed Black Belt, but I don't have time to read Red-Headed Black Belt all the time, and I didn't see it anyplace else. So I go into town, I go to two of the banks, I go to the grocery stores, I go all over. I'm, you know, very involved, and I didn't see anything about it until just a few days ago. So I think that that timeline that was supposed to expire yesterday, or actually on Sunday, should be extended, and I think that we could have somebody just like Quainton Time when we want to find out about who's homeless and what's happening. We should do the same thing about the economy, get people involved in it, get people stating their comments, what they believe in, what they think is lacking. Because you don't have accurate information if some random people find out about this survey and nothing else. I mean, I'm on the HHAC meetings, I'm on the emergency shelter meetings, nothing was ever said. So I think that, you know, to be involved in due diligence, that we really have to extend that time, and we need to canvas it a little bit and get the true acknowledgement and support and recommendations from the people that live here, because you don't have it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 4767, I'm going to unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, Board. I'm calling in regards to the public access at Fisher Road. My name is Jason Lazon, I've been chasing a steelhead on the North Coast since 1994. Excuse me. 31 years may sound like a long time, but in the grand scheme of things, it's just a small fraction compared to the legendary guides and anglers who are still out there well into their 70s and beyond. I was making a point to talk with those guys, to hear their stories about the good old days, when the rivers were full of fish, solitude was easy to find, and the only sign of human presence might be an old fire pit where someone warmed up and cooked a fresh streamside lunch. A lot has changed since then. In my time fishing the coast, mostly on foot, I've seen two major shifts: fewer fish returning and less access to the rivers. I've always believed in access to our wild rivers. In many cases, that access is protected by the high-water mark rite of passage. I'm grateful for that, and the people and entities, whether it's the city, county, or private landowners who allow us to get to the water. I firmly believe that to truly appreciate and protect these places, you have to... I firmly believe that to truly appreciate and protect these places, you have to experience them. That said, access through private land should be entirely up to the landowners. No one should be forced to give up their land for public access. We've already seen public access points being shut down because the county couldn't manage the abuse of the land from the public and the unhoused. For years, city and county governments and landowners have been closing off accesses because of trash, illegal camping, and misuse of both private properties and the public lands reached through it. Not having access to Fisher Road doesn't change my desire to fish the Van Duzen or how often I fish it. Like all of our coastal rivers, the Van Duzen shifts and changes from storm to storm, and there's always new water to explore and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all, Chair.
Okay, I'm going to open a public comment to the room, but before I do so, I would like to respond to Mr. Parker. You're welcome to say whatever you want about our board. However, our staff is nothing but polite and very reactive. I see the emails going back to you, and so I don't wish for that kind of attitude to be displayed towards our staff. They work very hard and take your phone calls. And so, I just want to state that for the record. And now, I'm going to open a public comment in the room. Please come forward. Hi, good morning. You have three minutes.
Bear with me, I'm not a public speaker. I've spent 40 years trying to outsmart something with a brain about the size of a pea. My name is John Klar, and I'm a salmon and steelhead guide since 1986. I have been fortunate to have been given through friendship the access to the Van Duzen through the patents property. I do have concerns. I'm retiring at the, I am retired now, I'm no longer a steelhead guide as of last Saturday. But I have concerns, some, several actually, garbage being strewn about, and you don't really need to look any farther than the access underneath the Highway 101 bridge to know what's coming their way. Hypodermic needles, beer bottles, you name it. Their home is an oasis at the end of Fisher Road. And I'm in the circle of guides, I know what's coming if that access is opened up. There are two outfitters over in Reading that have a total of probably 15 boats, not to mention the boats that are going to be coming down Fisher Road. And they make a lot of noise. That's something they're going to have to deal with for four solid months, every morning when it's fishable from December through March. And drift boats aren't quiet going down a bumpy road. It's a special place. It's a soul cleansing river, and it is the last of its type in this county. The Matola used to be that way. It's not that way anymore. I know you know that. It is a parade of boats. My question to you is, would you fight? If it were your home, would you fight as hard as you are right now to take that access and open it up? If it were your property and you had to listen to the parade of boats driving through your front yard every morning, and then again in the afternoon when they retrieve their trailers? I'm just asking you to consider doing the right thing. Some places, you don't have to open up just for the sake of opening them up. That rail spur dies one and a half miles up in Carlotta. It's not a yale river. The Van Duzen is a special place, not just to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Shelby. You have three minutes.
So, first meeting, second meeting, third meeting, and I'll keep going. The new direction that I'm kind of looking at is, and again, sorry, my name is Shelby, and I'm talking about Fisher Road access. This letter that was written and signed by 10 different people, gone down the list, and I've spoken with Karen Underwood, I've spoken with Alicia, very nice, but what I'm finding is people don't know what they signed. They didn't even know their name was on the letter. For example, Jane Stone, if you guys received his letter rescinding his support, he never knew the details of the situation, and there will be more people that will be writing in and rescinding their letters of support. But I have specifically run across two different people that had no clue what they signed or what they allowed their name to be signed to, and, you know, followed by, well, do you believe in landowners' rights? You know, that counties want over landowners' rights, that one should be squelched over. And it was like, absolutely not. So, that's my direction that I'm going. I will continue with the petitions, but I'm also going to delve down on all the folks that wrote in and called in. Jim Riza is another one that called in. I believe he's on the Humboldt Trails. No clue what he's, he didn't realize, he said Karen never disclosed the details of your guys' specific situation, and I will be rescinding my support. It's not okay for the county to be treating landowners like this, and it needs to stop. And I thought it was interesting, too, Eric Hollenbeck, Blue Ox, signed my petition. And he signed my petition, he said, I do not like taking sides, I like to try to stay neutral. He said, but in this particular case, given what I have dealt with, with the Great Redwood Trail going through my property, and the fact that I have no wildlife left, I do not support it, and they will do the same thing to you. So, thank you. And I would like to speak on behalf of Michelle and Rex and Tracy. This has been going on for six years with Kelly and I with Fisher Road, and not one time has Michelle or Rex not answered the phone or returned the call or returned the email respectfully. I believe you even answered the phone at 10 o'clock at night. You need to stop. So, you've been nothing but supportive, and I really greatly appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Thomas. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Thomas Mulder here. Coming to you before you as a community member of Southern Humboldt, born and raised, grandfather, community member, 13 years on the school board, cannabis farmer in the legal world for over a decade, construction for over two decades. I wanted to make sure I got here before my entitlement to speak was maybe taken away, you know? I didn't know, maybe you guys might be coming after that next. I appreciate I still have my entitlement to grow my own trees and sustainably harvest those through an NTMP that'll be passed on from generation to generation. Sometimes my elevation of my voice raises. I speak from the heart, I don't have any notes. I ask you next Tuesday, March 25th, to extend, anyone who's come in and paid $100, give them another year. I beg you. But if you're looking for that bias threshold, so that way you can cut me out, those of us that have paid about 30% of our mischievous taxes, have all of our compliance agreements dealt with, that would be where if you make them, you know, somewhere around 40%, that cuts me out and you don't have to see me again. That's great. So, this other thing that I'm coming before, last Tuesday, it was really, really unfortunate. You know, I spent four years at the Planning Commission. The policy that was before you last Tuesday, really, really mundane changes. I spent over 100 hours on that, talking to community members. There is very, very diverse. It was a housing crisis, I was told. About 1,000-ish STRs out there, maybe a thou, you know? And right now, I think there's about 300 permitted. Lots of public comment each way, I think I chaired most of them, really, really got a consensus to the policy that was there. And by the time when we created the policy, it was known that the cannabis policy was messed up, so there was going to need to be some tweaks and changes in implementation. And those tweaks and changes were before the Planning Commission and approved 5-0 vote, no objection, public comment. Come to this board, objection, no objection comment. There was one on roads, I didn't hear much talk about roads. I re-listened to the hearing today to make sure my comments weren't off-thread. And I think you're out of line, way out of line, overregulating. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Rex. I appreciate your no votes. Overregulation is not the way we're going to save this county. I'm going to tell you that right now. What's going to happen? You're taking away the sheriff's office's funding? We might as well go back to Wild, Wild West, because he ain't going to have the money to police it, or be stronger in numbers to break the law than to follow your policies if you continue the way you're going. It's very disrespectful. That's 100 hours.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on non-agenda items in the room? Okay, Supervisor Madron has a public comment, and he also will get the three minutes.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell, I appreciate that. So, this is in relationship to Fisher Road, and I'm not going to get into a debate, but I do have a public comment, which is my right. So, first of all, folks may not understand this, but we have a set of rules at the Board of Supervisors for our code of conduct and our ethics. And under Principles and Standards, item B1, it says that we are to act in the public interest. And the definition of that is recognizing that stewardship of the public interest must be our primary concern. Board members will work for the common good of the people of the county, not for any private or personal interest, and they will assure fair and equal treatment of all persons, claims, and transactions coming before the Boards of Supervisors. So, that's something that we're obligated to follow as one of our codes of conduct and ethics. Also, in regards to conflict of interest, it has been suggested multiple times in the last few months that I have a conflict of interest, because I sit here on this Board of Supervisors. I'm also a member of the Great Redwood Trail Agency Board, which is a public agency. I have no financial interest in either of these entities, per se, other than my salary. So, basically, by definition, I do not have a conflict of interest in regards to sitting on both the Redwood Trail Board and the Board of Supervisors. Additionally, anybody that knows me knows that I have a strong background in trying to find win-win solutions for landowners and for the public interest whenever I pursue public access issues or trail projects. And you can simply look to the Hammond Trail in McKinneyville, where I negotiated for 15 years with private landowners to be able to complete the Hammond Trail through McKinneyville. And I did that on behalf of the county and a state agency. So, I have a long history of working really hard to find win-win solutions. In addition to that, it should be known that on the Board of Supervisors, that's exactly what we're trying to do on Fisher Road. We've made an offer to try and find that win-win solution. We haven't gotten a response, other than the comments here, which seem to suggest that our offer is not being accepted. So, that's unfortunate, because I think there is a win-win that deals with the garbage, deals with trespass, and other things. You know, private property rights are really important, but so are also public property rights. And in that regard, there is clearly an implied dedication for public access to the Van Duzen River that stretches back over 100 years. In addition, in that area, there are actually encroachments on public land on the Great Redwood Trail that ultimately will need to be dealt with. So, I just wanted to make those comments. I appreciate, you know, the patents do live there, they have their rights, their concerns, but I, myself in this board, is trying to find a win-win solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other non-agenda items? Public comment, Supervisor Wilson will have three minutes.
I don't need three minutes, just a clarification. People often confuse sitting on different boards as being a conflict of interest, but really is covered under what's called an incompatible office law. So, it's, they're sort of separate things, and people can look that up, but it's called incompatible offices. And it's through the legislature, when these entities created, the legislature then enumerates what offices are not incompatible. And so, in this case, those offices are not incompatible, just like we're able to sit on other boards, such as JPAs and those sorts of things. So, just a legal clarification for folks, and they can look up that law, and it's always been of interest to me, or it's come up a lot, so I just want to let people know about it.
Thank you. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Supervisor Bowen will have three minutes.
Well, I was just going to comment on conflicts of interest. I remember being told repeatedly that I had a conflict of interest repeatedly, and had none, but they seemed to justify it. I did want to say one thing. When there is public comment, I think our board as a whole believes in freedom of speech. So, we give you the freedom of speech. And in the terms of a lot of public comment, or some public comment, there is great nuggets of information and everything else, but sometimes there are piles of BS. And it's up to you to differ what is true and what is not true, and realize what is good public comment and the ramblings of somebody that just is trying to put their own theories across. So, I just, I think that needs to be said, especially when there's personal attacks made and things like that. But we do believe in public speech. We're going to let you come up here and ramble all you want, week after week, but understand most people see through it.
Thank you. Is there any other non-agenda public comment items? Okay, I'm going to close that portion of this agenda. We are going to take a 10-minute break, and when we return, we will start our first public hearing. Thank you. So, we don't need to read it into the record, because it's here. Okay, we're going to go on, are we ready, Kaylee? Okay, so we're going to go on to our first public hearing, and this comes to us from Planning and Building, and I'm going to open the public hearing and pass it to Director Ford.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors John Ford, Stephen Santos, and Cliff Johnson, to present a request to modify the commercial cannabis land use ordinance and also to adopt a Q-zone that would be applied within the MB Business Park. That's a result of allowing indoor cannabis cultivation in the MB zone. Just want to say, this comes to you, it seems a little bit maybe complicated this morning, but part of what it represents is a collaborative engagement between the applicant, between the county, and between the Redway Community Services District to address concerns that existed there. So, this comes forward with a very positive amount of work and recommendation. I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Santos to give the presentation on this.
Chair Bushnell, members of the board, good morning. Stephen Santos presenting the Evergreen Exotics Project, and...
You're going to need to speak up so we can hear you into the micro. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Is that better, Chair Bushnell? Thank you so much. Just waiting for my PowerPoint to pop up. There we go. Could we go back one slide? This project would affect the Redway Business Park. Next slide, please. And if adopted as recommended, would specifically affect seven parcels within the business park. Next slide, please. The primary action before the board this morning is an ordinance amendment to the CCLUO, and that amendment would allow indoor cultivation within the inland business park zones that have a Q-qualified combining zone. To implement that amendment, there would also, this proposal also includes a zone reclassification to place a Q-qualified combining zone within the Redway Business Park. Next slide, please. This slide contains the actual amended language to the CCLUO. It's very surgical. It involves the underlined portion of the paragraph you see on the slide, which would then make MB zones within the indoor portion, I mean, within the inland portion of the county eligible for indoor cultivation, as long as it was within a Q-qualified combining zone. Next slide, please. The zone reclassification, then, as I mentioned earlier, would also place a Q-qualified combining zone on those seven parcels that I showed in the geographic slide at the beginning. In addition to the requirements within the CCLUO, the Q-qualified combining zone also adds eight additional performance standards to indoor cultivation. adds eight additional performance standards to indoor cultivation relating to water, energy, and odor control. We did not receive any public comment on the proposal before this hearing. Therefore, it is the recommendation of staff that the board adopt the resolution, finding that the board has considered the final EIR for the CCLUO, as well as the project-specific addendum that was prepared, finds that the project complies with the general plan and the zoning ordinance, finds the proposed amendment is in the public interest, finds the proposed project does not reduce residential density for any parcel below the inventory adopted in the housing element, and adopt the ordinance as described in Attachment 1A, which is the amendment to the CCLUO, as well as adopt the ordinance as described in Attachment 1B, which is the placement of the Q-qualified combining zone. And then finally, of course, direct the clerk of the board to publish the post-adoption summaries. And that concludes my presentation of the proposal. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. At this time, I would offer the applicant, if they would like to say anything, or their person that's doing this for them. I would offer you 10 minutes. Hi, welcome. Kaylee, can you do 10 minutes, please? We're going to hold on one second.
Yes, give me two seconds.
Sure.
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Awesome. Well, good morning, Supervisors. My name is Leah Nelson. I work with North Point Consulting. And we just wanted to say I'm here with Praj White and Angie Dodd of North Point Consulting, and also the applicant. We've been working with staff to bring this forward, and we are here, if you have any questions, and would love a chance to respond if there are any questions at the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Praj, do you have anything additional?
Yes, I just wanted to add a little bit that this request about amending the ordinance affects zone MB. And MB, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, that I believe that it only exists in two areas in the county, the Business Park at Redway and up by the airport. And in the original CCLU process, the, I believe, the majority of the owner of the property at the Arcade Airport stated there is no interest in cannabis, and we could understand that that's where the federal courthouse is. And that's by the airport. And so MB was left out and limited. And if you look at the MB zone, it's very interesting, most all cannabis-related activities are allowed to occur, except for indoor. And even, I think, in the Evergreen Business Park, there is MH zones, which let you do everything. And so it's kind of an anomaly how MB got left out the whole tray of opportunities within cannabis. And I just kind of wanted to create that idea for you guys to look at, that really this MB just kind of got shorted this full suit of options, and wanted that to be part of what you heard today. So, thank you, and as I mentioned, we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. So Jesse, do you want to say anything? Are you good? Okay. So, okay. So that concludes your 10 minutes, and then if any board members have questions, they'll call you back up.
Wonderful. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, first of all, I'd like, Director Ford, do you want to reply to any of that?
There's nothing there that we would disagree with. I think the comment made by Mr. White is really appropriate. There are only two places in the county where MB exists. They're two entirely different situations. I would add that if in the future, for whatever reason, the McKinleyville property owner changed their mind, the opportunity would exist to place a Q-zone there. But cannabis does not, is not allowed, indoor cannabis cultivation is not allowed in the MB zone without the Q-zone. So it just can't go, cannabis, indoor cannabis cultivation can't go there right now. But if in the future, somebody decided, as a property owner, you know, I really want to do that, the door is not completely closed to that. It just requires a rezone.
Okay, thank you. And I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson.
Thanks. My question goes to the conversation from Mr. White, as well as with the director. I mean, why, why not just do a Q-zone over the whole MB area, either in both or just the Southern Humboldt? Why pick out just seven parcels? Why not just do the whole thing?
Because the applicant did coordinate with the property owners in the Redway Park. Not all of them wanted to participate. Not all of them have power. Not all of them have the same water allotment. So it's really kind of a strategic decision on who wanted to participate.
Well, it's an interesting, if we were to do an overlay through the whole thing, the property owners could participate or not participate in that land use activity. There isn't, we don't make people grow indoors, or, you know, we don't, it just adds to the list of opportunities for the other property owners. I don't understand, like, what, is there any sort of real planning or justification for doing just seven as opposed to just doing the whole thing?
A lot of it had to do with consultation with the Redway Community Services District, with the water capacity studies.
Okay.
Understanding who, where there was the ability to serve.
And was, and what about power? Was that also considered? I mean, we keep hearing that there's a lack of ability to deliver power. Is that something that was part of that conversation?
One of the criteria in the Q-zone does address power. And so they have to have the power existing at the site for that to be reviewed and approved.
Okay. I still, it's still a little bit troublesome to me, the part about where it just goes to, I mean, for me, I'd just rather do the whole, honestly, just allow it for the entire area, because it seems fair. What seems sort of interesting to me is what we're allowing for, seven parcels to get to the front of the line in terms of the, in terms of the access to the public water resource. Do you see what I'm saying? And so it seems like we're, we're, in the long term, it's there, it's going to stratify sort of the ability of parcels within that, within that community to develop in certain different ways. And so even if you consume all the water resource, that still then means everywhere else is limited, not just for this use, but other uses too. So if we're really pushing up to an edge where water is such an issue that we have to limit the number of parcels in this subdivision, then we're going to limit water for every other use within that, within that district.
I think the best answer I can give you is that this was coordinated and collaborated between the property owners and between the Redway Community Services District. If you want to either have everything given the Q or not at all, then what we need to do is go back and coordinate with the other property owners, re-advertise this, because it's not currently advertised to zone those other parcels. And so we would need to go take a step back and propose to place that zoning on the other properties, and then come back through the Planning Commission and to the board.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. Thank you. Those are my questions, and those are my concerns. Thanks.
Supervisor Madron.
You know, I appreciate the discussion. In regards to the airport property, I mean, you know, if, well, when federal legalization occurs, whether it's two years or 20 years, you know, there may be an interest on that property owner to have more opportunities that a Q-zone overlay with the MB might open up. I mean, I think back 25 years ago in Amsterdam, how the whole economy of Amsterdam was all around coffee shops and cannabis, and people from all over the world were traveling there to experience that. And, you know, the airport might be a place where that might occur sometime in the future, and maybe that's not really what this zone does, because this is about indoor cultivation. But, you know, who knows what that airport Business Park is ultimately going to evolve into over time with the airport growing and other kinds of things. So just a simple comment. Thank you. Appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify something, and I had a similar thought about why not just all of these properties. But I hear what you're saying about the process, as well as the, and I saw in the staff report where you talk about the fact that these properties were analyzed as part of the study that the CSD had already done about, about water, water capacity. So the only, so the only kind of question left for me is about, so I see their letter, their letter of support, but that's from a year ago, saying that they were going to go through the process of doing their commercial ag ordinance, and then they wouldn't, you know, they would be able to accommodate the water needs in conjunction with that ordinance. Do you know if that's already happened? It said in March of '24 that it was under review with their attorney.
We're not aware whether they finished that work or not.
Okay, well, maybe the applicant may know. I'm not sure. That would, I'd just be interested to know whether this is something that's going to be moving forward fairly quickly, and whether, you know, they've been able to complete that.
I actually know that they have not adopted that ag ordinance yet. They've had a change within their board, and so with elections process, and so I think that they're trying to accommodate that. But maybe Jesse has, so Jesse went to the applicant, come up, he went to a lot of those meetings and talked with the CSD executive director, so maybe he can add some insight.
Yeah, so my name is Jesse Jeffries. I'm the applicant. I've been working on this for two and a half years to get to this point. I wanted to speak to Wilson, why the Q overlay doesn't encompass all of the parcels up there. The reason is, is because some of the parcels up there do not have an existing water service, and they were not included in the 2014 capacity analysis. We originally tried to add additional parcels in there, and some of the parcels have never been hooked up to water, so they weren't involved in the capacity analysis. And then as far as PG&E goes, I just submitted an application to PG&E for a car charging station in Garberville, and it looks like I'm going to get the power. I've been working on that for years. Every three years, PG&E does a capacity analysis on the lines, and there's been some applications through a local electrician who have just opened up. So there is power down there, available on the lines for people in general, but these parcels in the Q overlay, only a couple of them have existing power that can be used without being upgraded. And what was the other thing I wanted to speak to?
The ag for Redway Water.
So the Water District, it took me quite a long time to get them pointed in the direction of writing an ag ordinance for water up there. They're in the process of it. It's a lengthy period. There is standards that will be held to. I think those are in the performance standards. There will be an additional 40,000 gallons of water storage on-site, and that could be drafted during the high-flow season and stored for the low-flow season. So that was accounted for as well in there. And I'm trying to think of anything else on the project. And so, yeah, oh, so the other thing is, as far as the Q overlay would go, over all of the parcels, when you cut up to the Meadows Business Park, everything on the left side of this street is zoned, I think it's MH. And so you can cultivate, you can do a nursery, you can do everything this cannabis-related on the left side of the street, but everything on the right side of the street is zoned MB. And it just really got overlooked, I believe, from the 1.0 to the 2.0, and it didn't get included in there. And so on the right side of the street where the MB zoning is, the reason why seven parcels are only included, one reason is because the guy who created the Meadows Business Park owns about 80% of the parcels on that side of the street, and he was uninterested in the Q overlays, 95 years old, and just not something he was interested in. And then the seven parcels that we included, we got a letter from everybody that's interested in adding this use to their parcel. So just because we're proposing seven parcels doesn't mean there'll be even one more project beside mine. So it's just an added use to people's parcels.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
I do want to add, for the PG&E, Garberville Proper is having some openings with their power because of the upgrade they've done through Bridgeville, through Alderpoint. However, they are not extending those upgrades available outside of Garberville Proper at this time. And did you want to add to, Praj?
Just to touch it.
Okay, please, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond on the water use, that the maximum water use that will have to be metered in the performance standard is 91,250 gallons. And any additional water use by the applicant has to be rain collection and stored in tanks on-site. And that number was agreed upon by the Service District as the average consumption of a non-cannabis business. And it was put forward in order to constrain that actual demand on the Service District and keep it consistent with existing uses. So just wanted to make clear that the performance measures on that, and also that the power has to exist on the parcel already. So the existing performance standards that are within this ordinance proposal really address not using an increase in water and using only existing committed power that is on-site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ben? You can go ahead and sit down, Praj.
Yeah, I, looking at this, knowing, I imagine one of those parcels does want to be approved as a DMV, too. I imagine they're not going to set up something in the back room. So, yeah, it's legal in California. I think on this option, I think what says a lot, and I'll say the same thing I said last week, Planning Commission spends, and we heard it today, spends multiple hours on this, and I think they voted 5-0, according to this, to push this forward. And they asked many of the same questions we're asking, probably more in-depth, and there didn't seem to be an issue. So I give full faith, you know, on my member, you know, following the right. I never talked to him, but he doesn't, I don't get any complaints about him either, and I don't, I imagine you guys don't talk to yours or have complaints about yours either. So I appreciate the Planning Commission, and like to follow what they do, because we overpay them, too, for volunteer board.
Thank you. I'm going to go out to public comment. I do want to say that, you know, I attended the Redway Service District meetings to update myself and to make sure that the surrounding community felt secure about this application and what was going on up there. The Redway Business Park, you know, Southern Humboldt is really seeing a downward trend in people and opportunities down there. And I feel, as the supervisor in that district, that this is a good improvement to that Business Park, which is largely empty right now, and that if we can instill commerce up there, and maybe it will help Southern Humboldt, I'm all for it. So I just do want to state that. We're going to go out to public comment on the Zoom first.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Can't stop speaking. That was an interesting public comment on non-agenda items. Never seen that before. Anyway, I did, I can't understand why Supervisor Wilson is trying to force entitlements on people who are not requesting entitlements. That makes no sense to me. Sounds like it's all worked out down there. Why get involved in that? This basically, in some people's opinion, would be economic brawl, which I thought Supervisor Wilson was against. But when you have somebody agreeing on something, yes, they is, you know, I would also think that somebody who supports a minimum carbon impact, you would have indoor, which is one of your highest uses of energy out there these days. So I'm a little bit puzzled about that particular direction he was going. I don't have a problem with the project down there. I think that, I think it's been worked out by all parties involved, and hopefully you will follow the staff recommendations. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
That is all, Chair Bushnell.
Thank you. Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and I am going to come back to the board. Supervisor Arroyo.
So could you help me understand the timeline for this? So if we move forward today, I see some detail in the staff report, but I think you could probably summarize more succinctly than I could find it.
So if the board were to adopt the ordinances today, they would be effective in 30 days.
Okay. And then, but the projects wouldn't be able to get the water until the Community Services District makes their decision around their commercial agriculture approach?
Realistically, I think that the water would be available separately from what the RCSD is doing. But in order to cultivate... the RCSD is doing, but in order to cultivate at a certain amount, there's gonna have to be rainwater catchment, which I don't believe is there yet, so that's gonna have to be probably set up over this season in preparation for next year.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, the Redway RCSD did say, outside of the ordinance, they already have committed to this project, giving him water at the rate that Mr. White said, which I think is 91,000 gallons. So he could cultivate, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but he could cultivate utilizing up 91,000 gallons now without rain catchment, he'll have to have a meter just like everyone else, am I correct?
That would be the limitation, yes.
Yep, so I, yeah, and then, I, so I'm just gonna make a motion for staff recommendation, if someone wants to second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion from the board? Supervisor Wilson.
So, I mean, as you can tell, my discomfort in this is just the spot zoning element of this, which is, we don't, it's not our habit to do spot zoning, you know, to do specific zonings for particular parcels within an area, it's just, in general, it's not considered like best practices in planning and land use planning. The other part about this is difficult for me is, well, it really stems around that, it's that if we're gonna offer opportunity, which I do think that if, you know, it's interesting, no one has to take advantage of an allowable use, right, so you expand allowable uses, say in this whole area, there's no reason, and I get it, what you're saying, is the analysis that we've done here, the environmental analysis, impact analysis, is based on what is in this report, and not based on a Q zone for the entire area, so you're correct, you know, it'd be very difficult to approve the Q zone for the entire area today, and I 100% agree with you on that. So, yeah, that's just, that's my discomfort with this, is that this is a very odd way to do planning, it's not good practice in my mind, and so maybe you can, you're giving me a puzzled look, so maybe I'm a little off the rails here, and so maybe you can help bring me back.
Thank you, through the chair, I'd like to maybe approach it from a slightly different perspective. We're not spot zoning, because we're not applying a zoning, a basis zone to an area, to one parcel that's completely different from anything else. We're saying that in this zone, this isn't allowed use, but it needs to have certain performance criteria to address the situation. That's the overarching idea that's going on here, is that in an MB zone, it's something that we're gonna allow, but it's gotta have performance criteria with it to go. So if you want to take advantage of that, you then come in with a Q zone, and with performance criteria to address the parcel or parcels that you wish to apply the Q zone to. And so in this particular case, we have the modifications of the CCLUO, which is the dominant change that's occurring here, which is to allow indoor cultivation within the MB zone. In order to do that, particularly in Redway, there were concerns that needed to be addressed relative to water and power in Southern Humboldt, so those have been addressed. So the performance criteria that's needed have been addressed. The other thing that's going on with the MB zone is that in McKinleyville, the property owner up there doesn't really want to see people come in and apply for cannabis. So what the requirement for the Q zone does is that it just gives a modicum of control for that property owner, whether or not he or she wishes to allow that.
And I would say, if we were going to the Q zone discussion, because I'm not even considering this in terms of like McKinleyville, the property owner, you could, we could do a Q zone that allows all kinds of things, the property owner could not allow those in the lease, and that's up to them. What I'm getting at is, like, if we're talking about, we're having, and we have a push-pull on this discussion at this board, within this community, about, you know, what the role of government is in terms of like its thumb on our economy and land use and those sorts of things, and what we're doing, both enabling and then also restricting. In this case, what I'm hearing, I think, a little bit is, is like, there's an argument that enabling more of that space to have these uses may not actually enable more business to occur, because then sometimes when you, like, we'll see, I'll just use an example, dispensary ordinances where there's, it's very liberal, and you can allow dispensaries everywhere, what happens oftentimes, they just pop up and die, and pop up and die, and I, you know, I assume the market will get to where it goes, but sometimes you limit it a little bit, and then you'll get some strength and longevity in those businesses, because there's a limited market for that. So I kind of feel like that's what's happening here a little bit. That being said, my, I don't know, just, my tradition in this is like, if you're gonna do a Q zone, do the Q zone for the whole thing, let the market work itself out, whoever pops up first to do this use can, and that can get the water, that can get the power, make it happen, but that's not what's being proposed here today, I appreciate what you're saying about that.
Could I just add one more thing?
Yes, please do.
Because I just feel like this can't be overlooked.
Right.
Part of good land use practice, good zoning practice, is to listen to the concerns of the community.
Yep.
So we had two sets of concerns, McKinleyville, don't want it.
Right.
Redway, we can tolerate it, but you gotta address the water, you gotta address the power, and if you do those things, we're in agreement. So what this Q zone does, even though it's limiting, I get that from your perspective, is taking and looking at what the community has articulated as their concerns, and incorporated that into an action for the board to consider, so that you're taking into account the concerns of the community.
And just one last comment on that, in relation to what was brought up, like DMV, it may not be DMV forever, right? And so part of planning is thinking about the future, and part of these, this discussion about a bigger Q zone, is not everyone will own those seven properties or the external properties forever, those will move around, right? And so when we limit the potential for something in just seven parcels versus the whole thing, we're just not really taking into account the changes in the future, it's like, you know, the comments of the community in a particular moment are valid, and they're real in that moment, but also we have to put our planning hats on and think about, like, what is the trajectory? And we knew this all the time, we think our neighbors are our neighbors until they're not our neighbors, and then something else happens, right? So I'm okay with this going forward today, albeit I have, you know, for me, I want an expansion of those, of those uses within the Q zone, I'm very uncomfortable about just limiting it to seven parcels as a policy and as a practice, so I'm supportive of the landowners getting those entitlements, I want them to have them, like, I think that's good. I just, the practice of limiting it in this way is something I think we should move away from, and I would say, like, I'll probably not be in favor of that kind of practice in the future, that's just my thoughts on that, so I appreciate the work that's been gone into this, I appreciate the intention, and so that's my thoughts, thanks.
Thank you, we have a first and a second, and Kaylee, can you call for the vote, please?
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes, and I also want to appreciate those comments, and I think we found a good compromise, but I concur on some of that.
Supervisor Bone? Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, I also want to thank the staff and the applicant, it's been two years that this was first recognized, when, you know, he called me and said, why is this zoning there? And I'm like, I don't know, let's talk, have you talk to Director Ford, and so it's been a lot of work, a lot of community involvement, so I just appreciate everybody that's been involved in this. Okay, so we're gonna go on to the next, I'm gonna close that public hearing, and I'm gonna open the next public hearing, and this is gonna be coming to us from Planning and Building as well, revocation of 15 permits due to unpaid Measure S, and planning fees, and there's a list of them here, and I'm gonna pass it to Director Ford.
Thank you Chair Bushnell, good morning again, John Ford with Kathleen Johnston and Cliff Johnson, there is a T in one and not in the other, and here to present the revocation of 15 cannabis permits, and I don't think this requires a lot of introduction, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Johnson to present this.
Good morning Board of Supervisors. My name is Kathleen Johnston, I'm here to present today on the revocation of 15 cannabis cultivation permits. So in October 23, the board gave permit holders until March 31, 2024, to either, to pay their, to put a payment plan on their Measure S taxes and pay their department fees. Permits were suspended in April of 2024 if permit holders had not met that deadline or come into a payment plan since then. The following 15 permits did not enter into a payment plan and have not paid their department fees, and have been suspended since April 2024. All 15 state licenses have expired, all of the properties have been inspected, either remotely or in person, and just in response to some of the questions that you had on permits from last week, I did look into when they stopped cultivating, most of which stopped in the last three years, and those, that's detailed in this slide. I heard from two permit holders in response to these notices, neither of them were able to take action in resolving this, and still had not entered a payment plan as of this Also in response to some of your comments from last week, I did look into ownership a bit, 12 permit holders currently still own their properties, three permit holders did sell their properties, and they did not transfer their permit, the new property owners are not liable for the Measure S taxes, and they are not liable for the department fees. Eight property owners are behind on their property taxes, six of which are permit holders. So it's our staff recommendation that we adopt 15 resolutions that do the following, find the permits have been exercised contrary to the terms and conditions of approval, and revoke them per the Humboldt County Code.
Thanks. Thank you, so I'm gonna bring it back, Director Ford, do you have anything to add? Okay, so I'm gonna bring it back to the board, I do have one question, and I'm gonna open it up to the board. Every one of these, and I just want to state it for the public listening, has Measure S that are owed, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and also, I do have a question about when permits are suspended or revocated, there is a clause that says you have to dismantle your cultivation permit, and what is that gonna look like with the permits that trans, that the land sold, that infrastructure is still there, what's that look like?
So what will be the next stage is we will notify the permit holders and/or property owners at this point, that there is no longer a permit on file, so the cannabis-related infrastructure needs to be removed, it can be retained if there, if it serves a permitted use on the property, but the large greenhouses, the large amounts of irrigation tubing and things like that will largely need to go. I did want to provide one point of clarification, that we've probably been a little bit lenient on this, is the code also stipulates that a permit can be suspended for six months, that in six months' time, it really is time to take action on that, to either return the permit to inactive status or to move it forward for revocation. In these particular cases, they've been suspended, but the permit holders have not really asked for action, have not really pushed to see this resolved.
Thank you, can I follow up one question with the revocation, and then they have to dismantle the permit, so the Measure S taxes don't transfer to the new land owner, but the responsibility financially to remove that infrastructure falls on the new land owner?
Yes, it could fall on a new land owner.
Well, it would, right?
If they bought the property with that infrastructure in place, the infrastructure, it is their responsibility to remove the infrastructure, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, any other questions from this board? Supervisor Arroyo?
It's not a question, but to add on to what you had stated about the unpaid Measure S taxes, not only are they, do they all have unpaid taxes, they all have outstanding department invoices and haven't established a payment plan, so to me, this is, yeah, just for anyone watching.
Yeah, I was making this statement for the public, I did look at the staff report, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll go out to public comment on the Zoom.
Thank you Chair, caller 7718, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Public comment is it's probably time to quit being the nice guy and quit doing the leniency thing. I don't quite understand why if you have a permit holder who also owns the property, why that particular thing cannot be deemed the property, so when somebody tries to buy the property, that shows up on their title report, and then something either they're aware of that the money's still owed, that I'm having a hard time understanding why that mechanically can't be done, maybe something was done in error when you originally set these up, exclude you from that, maybe it's just a learning curve lesson to not do in the future. Again, regarding Measure S, you know, I feel strongly that somebody did the payment plan and paid the $100, and just paid 50% of the money owed for Measure F, and all of their fees, that maybe you give them another six months, I know that's gonna be something on your gin, but next time, look forward to maybe making comments on it then, but it's time to put the hammer, especially getting these cleaned up, there, there's some pretty nasty stuff out there, getting in the waterways and blowing in the wind, and it's time to get it done, I hope, so good luck with that, thank you.
Thank you, caller 2223, I'm going to unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Craig Johnson, and I just want to make a comment about this in general, and, you know, I heard Supervisor Wilson mention, let's put our planning hats on, and to say that we haven't been jumping up and down saying Measure S isn't working, and notifying the board, sharing year after year after year that this is really gonna come to a final point and a cliff, and here we are. So please, you know, we were expressing over the years that this was gonna be happening, and that we needed a different plan with Measure S, and we're overburdened with fees and taxes in all different directions, so our farm does not owe any taxes, we are current, but my heart goes out to those that do, and that are having their reality right outside their home change forever. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, that is all Chair.
Thank you, is there any public comment in the room about this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to this board for a motion or more discussion. Supervisor Wilson?
I feel like that the occasion has to, it'd be better to read it, the motion is to adopt the resolutions 1 through 15, which do the following, find the permits that have been exercised contrary to the terms and conditions of approval, and revoke the 15 permits per Section 312-14 of the Humboldt County Code, and direct the clerk of the board to provide certification, a certified board order to the Planning Department to be included with the notification of the decision to the appropriate parties.
One second. Okay, we have a first and a second, I do want to say that I also feel for people, but understanding what this board directed over a year and a half ago, this has been a hard point to get to. So Kaylee?
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. I will close that public hearing, and thank you to the planning department and staff. So we are going to go on to a First Five presentation, and then we will be breaking for lunch and then coming back after that to finish our agenda. So at this time, because Supervisor Arroyo is the appointed commission member, I'm going to have her introduce this.
Wonderful. Well, I am delighted to welcome Mary Ann Hansen from First Five Humboldt to give us the annual community report. And it's been an honor to be a commissioner with First Five Humboldt, and it's really an exciting organization to be able to support in that way and look forward to the report. So thank you so much for being here.
Good morning. I'm Chair Bushnell, and supervisors, thank you so much for making time on your busy agenda. And I want to thank you, Supervisor Arroyo, and actually all of the supervisors who have served on our commission at some point. And also want to acknowledge co-chair Michelle Stevens of the commission who's here today. It's because of our community's support and the hard work of everyone in the community that First Five is able to do the work that it does. So annually, I try to come before you and tell you what First Five has been up to. So next slide, Kaylee. As you all know, and for any public who are watching, First Five Humboldt, our vision is that all the children in our community are able to achieve their unique potential within nurturing families and supportive communities. And that supportive communities piece includes that folks recognize the value of our children as our future, quite frankly, and invest in their well-being in all the ways that they can do that. We guide our work by the protective factors because we have significant levels of reports of abuse and neglect within our community. We use the protective factors to guide our work because they are demonstrated to reduce engagement with child welfare, right? And so those include parental resilience, and that's families being able to manage the stress and what's going on functionally well within their lives. Social connection, positive relationships, that social network that holds our families and children. Knowledge of child development and parenting, concrete support in times of need. And there are so many amazing nonprofits and our own Department of Health and Human Services that provide those concrete supports to families when they need them. And also the social and emotional competence of children, their ability to get along with their peers. Kaylee, Kaylee, sorry. Most of you might be familiar with this map. It's something that we sort of use to guide our work, like where are we in the community? And so during the 2324 year, we had 85 agencies and community organizations that we partnered with to help us meet our goal. We can't do any of our work by ourselves. We had 21 programs led by community partners, and that includes the nine that were funded by the DHHS First Five partnership grants that this year was the last year of those grants. But last year, nine of those, nine of those grants supported opportunities within the community projects. And then we had 23 playgroups. Yep, you can, yeah, you're doing great. You knew right when to switch. We had 23 playgroups operating that year, more than 1,000 playgroup meetings throughout the community during that year. That's a lot. And if you look at the calendar for playgroups, every day of the week except Sunday, there are at least two choices for families, and often as many as five. During that year, we had 1,500 parents attending, parents or caregivers, and more than 1,500 children. A little plus sign after that because we know that sometimes people forget to sign in all their kids when they bring them, and we're trying to get better about that. But we know with confidence that at least 1,500 children under five were attending playgroup, mostly infants to age three. We had last year 15,000 child visits to playgroup, which is a lot. And it actually reaches the pre-pandemic numbers, even though our birth rate in Humboldt County has declined by almost, well, by a third since pre-pandemic. So the number, we were averaging 1,500, and it sort of went to a little over 1,500 and 1,300. Now, the 23, 2023 numbers were 1,000 births per year for that year. So our zero to five population has declined, but our number of visits to playgroup has stayed very high and reached pre-pandemic levels. And on top of that, we've got navigators going out to those playgroups, working with families and providing direct support. So developmental screenings, referrals to services, parent education opportunities, because we're trying to meet families where they're at. And that previous slide, you don't have to go back, but the, like, these are pictures of playgroups. And what you see on the, in the left picture is the Orleans playgroup meeting at the river in the summer because that's where families are, and that's a culturally important space to that playgroup. And it's kind of fantastic that you have navigators out there and folks visiting people where they are and doing those developmental screenings rather than coming into our official, more bureaucratic spaces to access services. Thanks for flipping back and forth. I didn't mean to make you do that. So not only do we do playgroups, though, that's not all that we do. We had during that year more than 20 trainings or series of trainings, including workforce development trainings with almost 400 participants in those trainings. We also offered, you know, a community resiliency workshop, which I think is actually pretty critical. It's about how families and people working with families can learn to manage their own stress so they can really be present with the people that they're working with or the children, which is especially important for professionals in mitigating secondary trauma. Like, so, you know, monitoring where you're at. We've been offering a positive parenting program, Triple P Parenting Classes, which has been really well-received. We are using a grant from the Children's Use and Behavioral Health Initiative to offer those. I can say more about those if anybody's curious. And then we offered a symposium. So it's just a sample of some of the other things that we're doing in the community. Kaylee. And then, of course, the only other external grant besides our playgroup grants that remain because we've winnowed or reduced funding in the community as our funding has declined. The only remaining outside grant is to the library. And they do a fantastic job. In fact, when we did a community-wide survey in 2324, 42% of those surveyed had attended library, library story hours. So that your Humboldt County Library has been an amazing partner. And surveys continue to be just fantastic about what they're doing. Kaylee. So it's no surprise to your board that First Five revenue has been declining. Since our inception, when your board established an ordinance and established First Five Humboldt, our revenue has dropped more than 60%, Prop 31 led to a steeper decline. And so over the last three years, it's been about a 30%, 30, 33, somewhere in there, from about $900,000 to about a little over $600,000 next year. And so that has been a really difficult adjustment for us to make. We're doing our best to reinvent ourselves by applying for grants so that we can maintain the level of services to Humboldt families. So we're about a 30-70 mix now, 30% Prop 10, 70% grants. Grants don't give us quite the same flexibility. And I'm sort of curious if your board has heard from the community in recent months because last month, the commission made a really difficult decision to reduce funding to playgroups next fiscal year. And we have really heard from families and playgroups how difficult this is going to be. We're giving them talking points. We're giving them really fantastic data. We're offering to go with them if they want to present to community groups, to raise funds, to keep playgroups going. But we're going to need to cut playgroups in about half the grants to communities. And I think that that's going to be really felt within the community. And I want to give you a heads up that that's going on because our hearts are breaking about needing to do that. But the fiscal realities, I know that your board is well aware of what that's like. So any way that you can show up in your community, offer support, give them advice about resources, that would just be fantastic because this is a tough time. And I know I don't need to tell you because I know the county's also facing challenges. Kaylee, can you? Thanks. But we have some great things going on this year. I'm actually really excited. We have the Welcome Baby Program, which we're so close to getting the final contract signed, which is a partnership with, between First Five, Kamao Medical Center, Redwoods Rural Health, UH, United Indian Health Center, Open Door, and Public Health to provide an opportunity for a nurse home visit to any, anyone who has a baby in the community and a couple of follow-up visits, too. I had mentioned earlier in the year when I presented to your board that according to the Strong Start Index, California Strong Start Index, we have the highest infant mortality rate in the state. And getting families off to the right start is really important. And so super happy to have that program. We're getting ready by June to launch Help Me Grow Humboldt. But I have, I have some questions for you. I'm just curious how that title lands with you because it's a national program, Help Me Grow. It's about a one-stop access point for supports for children's year to five, developmental screening, referrals, limited case management, or in our case, enhanced case management. Help Me Grow Butte, Help Me Grow Mendocino, Help Me Grow Ventura, right? Help Me Grow Orange County. It does land a little differently with me in Humboldt. So we might need a tagline or something. But we're super excited about, you can tell I grew up in Humboldt, and growing was a, you know, it was a big part of our industry for a long time. So look for that. We're really excited about it. And sort of giving families this easy access to some support, and that's all grant-funded as well. And then watch for our Triple P series. They've been, like I said, super well-received. We just did our second one in Orleans. We've doing them online. We've done them in Spanish. We've done them in Fortuna. It's been fantastic. We haven't actually had to do any outreach because people have been calling us and saying, could you bring this to our school, or could you bring this to our community? Kaylee, can you? I just want to leave you with the thought that tomorrow starts today, right? That what we're doing today has long-term impacts. And I know that your board, as our government leaders, every time I've watched you, you've kept that in mind, right? That it's not just our children, but our environment and everything that we do. The decisions that we make now have long-term impacts. And I couldn't be in this position without being a passionate advocate for caring for our children and our families. So with that said, thank you for your time. And do you have any questions?
So thank you, Mary Ann. I'm going to bring it back to our board for questions and clarifications. I'm going to go to Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much. I mean, the work you do at First Five is just so amazing. Feedback-wise, a few years ago, I did get a lot of concern in Willow Creek about playgroup. There was some difficulty with having the right persons available to help sponsor that, et cetera. But I haven't heard for a couple of years. I think that got resolved. Thank you for that effort. It's so important out there. It's, you know, so much more isolated than on the coast where there's so many more options. Even, I mean, playgroups are so critical, but there is still a lot of other options, which is helpful in these urban areas. But in those rural areas, I suspect Southern Humboldt the same, it's just, you know, difficult. But you do your best, and I appreciate that. So if you change the word "me" to "babies," help babies grow.
Help babies grow. Oh, well, there you.
Just one word change.
That's a great idea. I'm going to take that to the commission, yeah.
So thank you for all you do.
And I will say that I just was looking over the survey results of Willow Creek as I was, you know, doing some work in the audience. And 100% of families in Willow Creek recommended the playgroup. So great, great work going on out there.
Thank you. Youth, too. It could be help youth grow if it's more not directed at, you know.
Not just infants, but.
Yeah. I do want to say that I've heard with your diminishing funds and how vital the playgroups are in the rural areas. As Supervisor Madron said, I have heard concern that they aren't, some of them are not going to be able to be funded next year. Both of my, all three of my grandchildren have attended playgroup in Castrolin when it was available. And it's, rurally out there, they don't have a lot of opportunities socially until they get into school. It's very, you know, minimal population. And so it's grandma, grandpa, mom and dad, and siblings. And so I have appreciated, when I was on First Five and now as the alternate, just what First Five does, I've been in awe of you, Mary Ann, so many times. And what you bring forward, how you adapt, how you, you know, I know that you care so deeply and that it personally affects you, but you have adapted and changed and tried to find other funding solutions for First Five and that board. That board works hard and tirelessly. I'm so sad that we are going to be losing some playgroups, especially in the most needed areas. And so I'm hopeful that maybe in the future, we can find some funding. I do want to appreciate what First Five brings to Humboldt County and for the children, what the ACIS groups that they have, they really work on removing that ACIS category from young families and what's provided to young families in such a critical time of their lives. And so thank you from me. And Supervisor Arroyo. Thank you. I do want to address the playgroups a little bit because we developed a criteria with wonderful support from First Five Humboldt staff. We developed criteria for selecting, so we don't know which ones yet we will not be able to fund in the next year because that process is still ongoing. So unless there's new information that I don't have since our last meeting, we're still in the process of getting those applications. And the, one of the goals was to continue to fund playgroups where there is a great need, where there are few other opportunities, where it's not, where there isn't that kind of resource in the community. So we were very cognizant of the fact that for, particularly for our very rural communities, that this is, you know, I'll say it's a valuable resource everywhere, but it's a unique resource there. And there were other aspects of sort of thinking about fairness and access that we really thought carefully about in those criteria and hope that we'll also see some other partners stepping up to support playgroups, some of the host organizations and venues and things like that. So I think it's not, it's not all bad news. And we do have to tighten our belts in the organization, just as we do with other areas of service. And so anyway, we've, we'll certainly be thinking carefully about where there aren't those other resources in the community. So I wanted to make that clear.
I really appreciate that clarification. If I can just expand just a little bit. The commission worked really hard on establishing those priorities, and I think that they are absolutely responsive to the idea, you know, if we have limited resources, where do we, where are they most needed? If we have to be thoughtful about that. And I just want to say that, that the year before I became executive director, the commission did a 10-year plan and established the playgroup initiative, which would be 10 years. And the idea was that at the end of those 10 years, the community would assume the funding for the playgroups, which I think was very optimistic. But also that idea that, well, communities would, they would have, you know, figured out how important this was. I do think they've recognized how important it is. The availability of funds perhaps isn't quite what the commission thought in terms of optimism at the time. But the other piece of that was that they thought that the commission would then close in 10 years. And so the idea was that money would be so little that there wasn't very much significant that they could do, and so that they would close the doors. And I think that it's a win for Humboldt County that through our partnerships, the support of your board and our community organizations, that we're still open 10 years later and I think still doing some great stuff in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson.
Well, on the other side of this, the other win is tobacco use has dropped dramatically.
So, I mean.
Yes.
And that, and the trouble that we're talking about is a reflection of that. So, and this is, you know, this was a program, this is a state legislated and created construct, you know. And so I feel like as we're transitioning to, or sunsetting, or moving into the next phase, whatever that is, as you're mentioning, you know, had, it was supposed to have a lifespan to it. There are the things that we really like about this and we want to keep going. And I don't see, you know, the tobacco tax going away necessarily. But it's, we're going, we're going to be looking at our resources locally to fill in the gaps. But we really probably need to work back to the legislature about, you know, finding and identifying the things we really think are positive and need consistent funding in these programs statewide. This is not just Humboldt County issue, so. Put it on our list. We are, it's on our list.
It's on your policy.
And we want to make sure that it's on our, our state, our state organizations' list as well because they're all having the same issue. We're not alone. Yeah.
It is on the legislative platform as well.
It is, but also, you know, there's a difference being on, you know, 10 pages of something. And when I'm sitting, or when we're sitting with our legislators, we can't get to all 10, all 10 pages at any one time. It's just, but so you coming to remind us to make sure that we're, that we're hitting that point as often as possible is very helpful. And likewise to the citizens of this county, if you're listening in and you think these, these programs are important, please reach out to our Senator and Assemblymember's offices, let them know. Because ultimately, that's really actually the place where the long-term survivability of these programs really sits. Thank you.
Absolutely agree.
Thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I appreciate what you said about, you know, it's tied to tobacco tax, which has always been so bizarre. We talked about this at First Five. I mean, really, the day we're looking for is when the state recognizes that investing in our youth and not tying it to a sin tax is where we need to be. You know, simply put, because it saves money, you know, to invest in our youth. When you think about all the things that happen when we don't do that, and how much that costs our communities, our families, and the state. You would think that we would be so past that and just provide this incredible foundational support to First Five, to HC Tacy, and to all these other things that just really make economic sense, let alone moral sense and stuff. So I look forward to the day that we get there. And it's great that people are stopping smoking, but, you know, I, anyway, yeah. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
I remember when we, directors were being switched and we were going to get stuck with you. And it's turned out to be a marvelous thing, kid. I mean, we had great leadership before 13, I think I was on it 12, 13 years ago. And I, and we had great leadership and some of those decisions, this will be gone in 10 years type thing. I, I know one of the first, not one of the first playgroups, but she wanted one out and patrol you pretty bad, so.
We still got.
For obvious reasons. But Matol Valley Resource Center's done a great job with that, as, as all these other rural areas done it, I know. I believe it's Dream Quest involved with the playgroup, which is they've got a brand-new building, a beautiful new building. And so that's, that will help attendance into the playgroups and the notoriety of going into somewhere as nice as that. And we have them all over. So, you know, Aziz, I think the playgroup in All Honesty years ago used to meet at the Veterans Hall. So, so as soon as we get, you know, as we move forward, those locations. And half of it is making, you know, and, you know, I think worrying about where the money comes from is the least of our worries. The sin tax, I mean, if you smoke, you pay a tax. Sometimes it's gone up, but if you're going, if that's where it's coming from, damn, it sure looks good when it goes to something this positive. So, anyway, thanks for everything you do.
I think Mary Ann's number-one worry is funding.
I know. I was like, okay, Rex. I just mean, I, I worry about money every day.
Oh, and you, and you have to. And I think we all have, I mean, across the board.
We all are, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're blowing everything, you know, we're doing, you know, Armageddon's heading here and everything else. But we're, we're going to, the idea of funding kids' programs rather than a lot of these other programs and then, you know, what, what helps kids' programs is, is a progression of construction, housing, all these things we hear about. And I'll sit there, I mean, everybody jumped on a soapbox today, and we hear it all the time. Let's quit restricting everything and, and move forward. And your, your monies will flow, everybody's will flow off the property tax, taxes, private people building things. We don't get that off of these public buildings that we build. But I think as we move forward, it's up to a lot of us to create those tax dollars. And then with the mindset that this board has, that, you know, kids, kids, I mean, the first three, four years, that's the formidable years. I mean, I, I'm, I'm one of these ones that drive down the street and see situations going, oh, God, I hope that kid has a chance. And you give them a chance, but.
Our community does.
Thank you. We're going to go out to public comment. I do want to say I'm glad people are not smoking. And I know that that does cut into your funding. So let's advocate for, you know, funding somewhere else. As Supervisor Wilson said, that when we were talking to our legislators, let's bring it to the top of the list because it is so important to Humboldt and to the young folks here. As Supervisor Bone just said, we need to give those kids chances. I also want to recognize that most playgroups, a lot of the playgroups, their play, their playgroup leader are parents that have stepped up, recognizing that those playgroups won't happen unless someone does that job. And oftentimes, it is that mom with three kids that recognizes the need. And, and it's not, it's not easy. I, when I was there, and I'm sure Supervisor Royo sees this now, you know, leaders of playgroups are hard to come by sometimes. And so just really thanking the public and those parents, moms, and dads that step up and say, I will do it because it's needed in that area. And so I really want to thank those folks as well. And we're going to go out to public comment on the Zoom.
I have none. There is none.
Okay. How about public comment in the room? Okay. We are going to close public comment and bring it back to this board.
I'll move that re-file, receive and file this important report.
Hold a second.
Supervisor Royo?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Ann, for being here and your commitment to our young folks, our young youth in Humboldt County and their parents. So, so at this time, we are going to go on a lunch break. And we, I'm going to ask this board's preference, 45 minutes or an hour? Okay, so we will, we will return at 12, let's just do 12:40. We will return. So we are going to be in recess until 12:40. Thank you. Welcome back. We are back from lunch. And our next item is going to be brought to us by Supervisor Madron. Hopefully, he's coming. We got them all. They emailed us this morning.
Okay, great.
I mean, I did. So, welcome back once again. Our next item is coming to us from Supervisor Madron. Letter of support for AB 263, Scott and Shasta River Watersheds.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. So this is a bill submitted by our new Assemblymember, Chris Rogers. And he put out a fact sheet, so I'll just read a couple of the highlights from that. You know, as, as we know, fishing is a very important part of our economy. And I certainly have strong allegiance to the tribes, to the salmon and the fisherfolk in our community, which I believe this bill helps. So AB 263 would allow the emergency regulations that are currently in place on the Scott and Shasta River due to drought in those watersheds to remain in effect until permanent rules establishing and implementing long-term in-stream flow requirements are adopted. Under the issue statement, it talks about the Scott and Shasta Rivers continue to experience drought effects. And the salmon cohorts currently in and returning to these watersheds continue to be significantly suppressed by the successive drought cycles. In addition, these tributaries contribute heavily to the ability of the Klamath River watershed to historically support one of the largest salmon populations on the West Coast. And then without immediate efforts to address low water flows, several native fisheries that rely on the Scott and Shasta are at risk of extinction. And this will have a ripple effect on the ecosystem and communities like Humboldt that rely on salmon. It talks about the cultural significance to the tribes in the Klamath River watershed, including the Urok, Karuk, Quartz Valley, Indian Reservation, and Hoopa Valley. Salmon are also important to commercial ocean fisheries, as we know. And then lastly, extending the temporary regulations until the State Water Resource Control Board finalizes permanent regulations simply maintains a tenuous status quo. Without these protections, there would be less water in the Scott and Shasta rivers, imperiling the delicate recovery of salmon populations. And I'll add that have really immediately taken advantage of the dams being removed and have been returning home to places they haven't been for 100 years. So that's the introduction.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Royo?
I, I guess I, I heard questions and then I do have comments. I, I'm very supportive of this. I appreciate you bringing this forward. And I've, you know, communicated with Assemblymember Rogers' staff. I was thinking of his staff's name. And, you know, just really appreciate that he worked closely with the Karuk tribe on this to bring this forward. This is aligned with, you know, my values as well. And I think it's a reasonable approach until there are long-term flow requirements that have been adopted. And thanks again for, for bringing it forward.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, it almost sounds like Craig Tucker wrote it, not Chris Rogers' staff, but. I'm trying to figure out, and I, and I've called a lot of the supervisors up in Siskiyou and stuff, and they came out opposed to it. And I've got, my concern is, why is an assemblyman out of Sonoma, or up here, too, and everything, you know, writing things for the Siskiyou, for the Scott, when they have a lot of opposition to that up there and it affects them? And that's not mentioned at all, I noticed, that, that. And I've just, I've just got some feelings about that. And I know this is going to affect livelihoods of farmers. I think, like you said, the fish with, with, they've extended the drought, you know, poor, dry flooding today, Siskiyou County. The only county in the state that I think has a drought declaration. And it just seems so coincidental. And I just, if this had a timeframe on it, but if this takes six years, we're talking about restricting these. And I'm, it, the original, the original part of this is when there's a drought, is a one-year. And I'm willing to double that and go to two years. But if there's going to be no, any look of, of a sunset on this, I have, I would have a hard time supporting. And I just, and, in all honesty, supporting the, the Siskiyou people also. So, thank you.
Thank you. I additionally, I spoke with Assemblymember Rogers two weeks ago when this item first came. It got pulled off of our agenda, I think because our full board wasn't here. And I expressed concern mainly because AB 263 would allow the emergency regulations that are currently in place on the Scott and Shasta River watershed to remain in effect until permanent rules establish, establishing and implementing long-term in-stream flow requirements are adopted. And my concern was that this assembly bill, I'm afraid, would give them no reason to continue trying to get the regulation forward that we need because it doesn't have a timeframe. I had talked to Assemblymember Rogers about, you know, what, what do you, and he, he did agree with me that without its sunshine, that he did agree that it, it, it could work with maybe a three-year timeframe on it. I don't see that language changed now that it's came back. And so I just have concerns about not having an end date on it so that the emergency regulations can conform to regulations without it being an emergency. Any other discussion? Do you have any other discussion? I know to go public comment. No? Okay. So we will, at this time, go out to public comment and we'll go to Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Ken Swawski, last time, as far as I was concerned, what happened in the, in the Eel River, we really got screwed over. I mean, we had a two-basin solution, which I felt the water should stay in the river. This time, we appear to be benefits. And I guess Mr. Rogers, in my opinion, is doing the right thing. I'm not worried about how long it takes to get from this to other regulations. I think Eel County has plenty of political smoothes throughout the state to see that that happens in a timely manner. In fact, this will, this will force everybody to come to the table and come up with a, a long-term permanent solution. I strongly support moving forward with this letter as, as written. I do, I do wish the people in Humboldt County would, would support the, the children of the tribes as much as they see to support the fish that they rely upon for subsistence. It's way past time, in my opinion, that the, the waters be allowed to flow. I'm sorry, sorry that farmers and mankind are going to have to suffer to the benefit of Mother Nature, but I, I am, I'm really not sorry of it. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. And I hope, hope that we will have three votes to send this letter off and hope that the, the tribes will be supported as appropriate. And I, I'm not hearing from them. Do the tribes support this or not? I would assume so. And if they, if they, if they don't, then I would be against it. Otherwise, I'm in favor. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
That is all, Chair.
Thank you. Any public comment in the room? Seeing no public comment in the room, I will close that and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
I do hear what you're saying. And I do think there's, there could be some utility in a date to this. But I would, I will, I would, I would, here's two conditions that I would have in potential amendments to this letter. I want to, I want to make clear that the, the message from Humboldt County is in support. But I would ask for consideration from the, from the Assemblymember for a five-year date on this, for it, or for potential renewal. But it's just a recommendation. I, I don't want to put it out as a, be really clear. I don't, I don't want to have it like support unless amended. But I do think it's a reasonable recommendation. And so I don't know what that language would be specifically. I think, I think staff through the chair could probably create that intention. And so I'm happy, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this letter with just an added sentence that, you know, for consideration of a, of a timeframe for renewal. Of not less than five years. Thank you.
Did you make that motion?
My motion very complicated.
May I make a comment as well?
Supervisor Royo?
Yes. So I support that. I think that's a reasonable addition. And I, I think it's very much in the interest of Assemblymember Rogers' district that there be adequate flows in the, in the Klamath River basin. So I think I, I support it. I think it makes sense that he brought this forward. And, you know, he was answering the call of those in his district. So I'm grateful to him for doing that.
Any other comments? Supervisor Bone?
I'd agree if we went to three years. Just with, I would agree if we went to three years instead of five because in five years, hell, lift me a whole new board up here. hell, lift me a whole new board up here. I want to be able to hold it, do that, and, I mean, that's just me, bigging that and everything else, and I know Supervisor Madron talked earlier about win-win, and I would like to see this win for both Humboldt County, our tribes, and Siskiyou County, who is the, the beginning of this issue.
Steve, you brought this up, I'm gonna get your thoughts on that before I.
Chair? Yeah. Well, I appreciate the discussion, and I actually agree with the comment that not having a, a limit, five years, three years, or any term, is what would be the strongest possible incentive to get it done sooner, frankly. So, I'm not really in support of limiting it. I think that the parties need to come together and figure this out. And Humboldt County and Siskiyou County work incredibly well together in the North Coast Resource Partnership, I will say. It's a phenomenal program started by Jimmy Smith with his, you know, leadership on working on common ground, and there's a lot of common ground in these things, and it doesn't just shut off the farmers, there are all kinds of incentives out there to help with irrigation improvements, to be more conservative with the use of water for alfalfa growing and all these other things. So, frankly, I would prefer not to have a date limit on it, because I think that puts the greatest pressure on the parties to get together and work this out sooner than later, but that's just me.
So, through the chair, and as we're having this discussion, I think, though, I, I wanna, I wanna say that I think we both want the same outcome. I think we disagree just on the strategy. So, there, the, I think the idea is that some kind of limit would actually force, would, or not force, but actually get people together sooner rather than later, as opposed to the open-ended. And I'm not saying, you might be right, and I might be right, but I'm just saying, I just want to recognize that we're both wanting the same thing, that maybe just a little bit strategically different. I'm gonna just, from my perspective, I'll, I'll just keep it at five years, because I feel like, three years is, you know, things move at the speed of government, and I want to make sure that, that we're not making unreasonable expectations on getting that done, and so, and I wanna, I wanna keep the, yeah, I just wanna, I wanna keep, keep things moving forward and show support, so.
Supervisor Bone.
See, my, my problem is accepting the fact that we move at the speed of government, and knowing how this was brought forward, or having an understanding of how this was brought forward and everything else. We do great, we do work great with Siskiyou, but that's who I talked to, were Siskiyou Board of Supervisors. They, I think it was a 5-0 vote against this, if I, if I read that right, like, I could be wrong. But, to keep working relationships, I mean, I don't know how much reaching out you did to Siskiyou supervisors on this that affects them. Quite a bit. So, I mean, and we've said this before, I remember hearing this six years ago, I've got all these ideas for the Eau River Valley to help them, you know, irrigate more sensibly. They, you know, it would only cost them 25 cents on the dollar. At the time, they didn't have 25 cents on the dollar. Right now, the farmer's up there unless you give them irrigation equipment, so, yeah, I would, I would like three years, so we don't rest on the laurels of the speed of government, and rest on the laurels of the speed of business to make things happen for financial reasons. Otherwise, we'll, we'll just stretch this out, blame it on, you know, everything but the situation, and then at the end of five years, we're gonna go, well, we're gonna need an extension, or we're gonna be, you know, or we're gonna bring in the drought situation. I mean, they're not in a drought, they weren't in a drought, so, is what they say, so, I'm just, I would like to hold to three years. That's, three years is a long time, and it's not that, you know, it, they can come to, this isn't something that started brand-new. These have been in talks all along, and this has been a discussion, and they've been felt, you know, that they were getting the short side, and now they're getting the short side. And it would be great if it was co-authored by the assemblyman from over there, and, and, you know, that would have been powerful, but there, she was not gonna get on that, so, I would, I would stick to the three years, or you guys have got your majority, it sounds like.
Thank you. I, I, I want to support this, I think it's important, and when I talked with Assembly Member Rogers, you know, this is getting, every year, they're having to do this, this extension, and so I understand what the motive is behind it. Maybe we could compromise and do four years. When I talked with Assembly Member Rogers, he understood my concerns, that, and I do think Supervisor Madron, we are talking about just different strategies, because I feel like it's going to prolong it, and I, I want to put a little pressure on that to get an, you know, get out of the emergency and get into a plan, and so I would ask them and the mushmaker if they could amend it to four, and maybe we can get majority on this board.
Okay, and then I'll, I can do that. So, again, support the, the letter in all its intent with just a recommendation to the assembly member to modify to four years, the, the length of time, so.
I can, I can support that.
Okay, so we'll wait for Kaylee to call the vote.
Thank you, Chair.
Hold on one sec, does Supervisor Bone, no? Okay, please call for the vote.
Supervisor Royo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes, and thank you for the amendment.
Motion carries 4-1.
Okay, so we are gonna come to our last item of the day, which is closed session. I'm gonna go to county council to read it in.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee performance evaluations for the positions of the Director of Human Resources, Chief Probation Officer, and Interim County Counsel.
Thank you. I will go to public comment on the Zoom first.
There is none.
Okay, I will close public comment, go to public comment in the room, seeing none, I'll close that. We're going to recess immediately into closed session, and I anticipate an hour. Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome back. We're at a closed session, and we'll go to county council for a report out.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. There was no reportable action taken with regard to items K-1 through K-3.
Okay, and we're adjourned for the day. Thank you.